The special meeting of the San Fernando City Council is called to order. It is now 5:01 PM. Row call, please.
Councilmember Patty Lopez.
Present.
Councilmember Victoria Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Joe Fajardo. Vice Mayor Mary Solorio, she is absent. Mayor Mary Mendoza.
Present. We have a quorum. All city council members in attendance are physically present, and no members are participating remotely for today's meeting. At this time, I am asking for approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve? And a second?
Second.
Row call, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo. Vice Mayor Solorio is absent. Mayor Mendoza.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Decorum and order are printed in the agenda. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public statements for the special meeting?
There are no public statements for the special meeting.
Thank you.
We have one public statement.
Okay.
Fernando Diaz, you may begin.
Hi, my name is Fernando Diaz. Just wanted to make a quick comment. A couple of items are going to be coming to you right now. And I just wanted you guys to keep into consideration that this is San Fernando. San Fernando is a small town. A lot of these projects that seem to be bombarding us. I highly recommend you guys scrutinize it thoroughly. I would not like San Fernando to become what other cities have become. And I highly, highly recommend you look at the verbiage that all these plans that are coming, not only at you, but you know, at the other departments too. When you see the verbiage where they offer things, please, please scrutinize it completely when they say, more density, more this, more that. San Fernando is a small community. And I highly recommend, you know, we keep it that way. There's not a lot like that left here. And we're small. We're going to lose San Fernando if we keep going. If we keep saying, you know, government, we cannot stop the wheels of government. I'm not saying to do that, but at the same time, you know, I'll use a Robin Williams quote where, you know, they say, you know, you're, when someone says you're too fat to diet, yes, you can, you know, stuff like that. You need to, we need to stop and see what's going on because if not, San Fernando is going to become everything, you know, like all the other cities. We only have a certain limited amount of water supply. If you look at the water report and stuff like that, three of the wells are actually, seem to have a lot of density. A lot of it comes back to density, you know? I do not know 100% how much of that water will be able to sustain if we keep on bringing more people in, if we keep on bringing more infrastructure, more apartments and stuff like that. So I highly recommend that you guys keep into consideration, not just the things that you want for San Fernando, but for the future, for our future. Because if not, we're going to lose it and we're just going to become just another city in the valley part of Los Angeles. And that's something that I would not like for it to happen. San Fernando is different. I would like to keep it that way. Please, please help us. A lot of the people don't come here to express themselves because, I don't know, maybe civic duty is not there for them. But please, fellow council members, all of you that are present, I highly, not highly, I strongly urge you guys to please pay attention to those words. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Decorum and order are printed in the agenda. Madam City Clerk, do we have, oh, no, we're done there. The next item on the agenda are administrative reports, receive and file a presentation on the update of the city housing element, implementation program, and provide feedback on housing and zoning implementation programs. We have consultants, John Moreland, Rincon Consultants Director Andrew Watkins, IZMK Senior Planner. Ms. Kith?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, member of the council. Our first item tonight is about our city housing element implementation plan. I'll turn the presentation over to our interim Community Development Director, Ron Garcia, for a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kanika. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. As City Manager mentioned, tonight's presentation is an update to the housing implementation plan as required under the city's current 2021-2029 six-cycle housing element. Staff and the consultant have been working really hard up to this date, and we're excited to be bringing forward this update as it relates to compliance with housing state laws and our local ordinances. Without further ado, I'd like to hand it over to our consultant, John Moreland, from Rincon Consultants. Thank you.
Testing? Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is John Moreland, I'm the Director of Community Planning with Rincon Consultants. And with me is Susan Hernandez, also with Rincon, as well as Andrew Watkins of JZMK. Tonight, we're going to go over and provide a little bit of a background or overview of the housing element implementation project, which is comprised of three main components. One is essentially a zoning code update. Item two is a historic survey update. And then objective design standards, which Andrew Watkins will go over. And then also allow time at the end for counsel input and feedback. So with the housing element update, I want to provide a little bit of a background about how this project came about and where we are. So the state is in a housing crisis. And there have been a number of state legislation and also the recent adoption of the city's housing element update that essentially all cities in the state of California would need to follow. Also, the city's zoning code was last comprehensively updated over 40 years ago. And since then, it has been incrementally updated, which leads for patchwork of some, of some updates. And it really kind of needs some strategic updates to really kind of help clarify and make it transparent for the public and staff to implement it. Also, the historic survey was last conducted in 2002, so it was about 23, 23 years old. And a lot has changed in the city in the past 23 years. And lastly, the city's housing element was adopted in June 2022. And part of the housing element are a number of programs that essentially, or essentially follow-on actions the city must implement in an effort to update the housing element. And so our project, our project really kind of came about, was contemplated back in the middle of 2023 when the city applied for what's called REAP 2.0 grants from the state and successfully won the grants for the, for that program. And the benefit about this, though, is this effort to update the zoning code and the historic survey and the objective standards doesn't come out of the general fund. It's essentially funded by the state. And in October of 2024, there was a memorandum of understanding that was adopted by the city and, and the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG. Now, the goals of our project are going to be to implement certain programs of the housing element. But while we're doing that, we're going to be looking at it with a lens of preserving San Fernando's character and also ensuring that high quality, that developments that kind of come through, future developments, are of high quality and will be compatible with the surroundings. Now, we have started our first effort. We did engage with the, with the community. To date, we've had five pop-up events ranging from, we kicked off the San Fernando Brewery Pride Event. We were involved in that. And we were also at the Movies in the Park, Concerts at the Park, and most recently, the city's 114th celebration. To date, through these, through these events and the survey that we had, which I'll go into a little bit more at the end of the presentation, we've reached 145 people and have had 78 responses on the survey. The survey is still open, but it still seems that what the trends are is that the, the community wants to have flexibility in terms of the architectural styles. There's support for flexibility for local land uses as it relates to businesses. And there's a slim majority of supporting density transfers for increasing density if a project provides things like more parks or open space. So the one key program of the housing, of the housing implementation project is the zoning code update, which is comprised of three components. The first one is updating the density bonus incentives. Now, this density bonus incentive is identified in Housing Element Program 5-7. And that Housing Element Program identifies that essentially the density bonus provision needs to be caught up with the recent state legislation. There's also a program to include incentives for large family housing. And one question that we wanted to ask council and get councils' feedback on is, want to get your input on other density bonus. That is where the city may grant additional density for projects that include community benefits for parks, open space, fully electric buildings, or other benefits. So we're definitely looking for your, your thoughts about, about that. The second component of this zoning code update is to enhance flexibility for commercial uses. And another question that we had for council is, should we allow similar types of business, of neighborhood-serving businesses, such as retail and personal services, that are currently allowed in the downtown area of San Fernando, but they're not allowed on McClay Avenue? So should we go through and update that to essentially allow the same flexibility on McClay Avenue as, as in downtown for commercial uses? And lastly, the other component of the project would be housing element implementation. Really just updating, updating the zoning code to reflect current state legislation. Also, on Program 5-5, which is regarding replacement housing. And also creating objective development standards, which Drew will get into in a minute. Also, the other, second component is the historic survey. As I mentioned, it's over, it's 23 years old. This new survey will reflect the current conditions of potential historic properties and reflect the community's values. And the survey will also identify next steps for historic preservation, as well as identify and provide guidance a little bit on adaptive reuse if any of these properties are identified for housing. And this survey will also help inform the zoning code update and objective development standards. And speaking of that, I'll hand it over to Drew, who will talk about the objective standards.
Thanks, John. My name is Drew Watkins. I'm an architect and partner at JZMK Partners. And we're leading the objective design standards or development standards component of the project. So why are objective design standards needed? These are really coming out of needing to comply with current state housing law. And so they're looking for cities to create these objective design standards to aid in the development of housing. What is an ODS? ODS is a short name for Objective Design or Development Standards. It's really a set of citywide regulations. They're clear, measurable, and consistently applicable to projects and their design criteria. It removes any personal or subjective judgment by a public official and helps the review process, you know, go a little quicker, be a little more predictable. So what are the purpose and goals of these specific objective design standards for San Fernando? We want to ensure transparency and predictability in the development process, the application process to the city. We want to support high-quality design outcomes that are compatible with the city's vision, right? There's a document that, that you are creating. And we want to help streamline project review and approval process, aid city staff in being able to quickly and competently review development applications. And overall, we want to use this to preserve the character of San Fernando. So what's an example of a subjective versus an objective design standard? On the left, you can see, you know, some examples of subjective criteria. They often use shell or could and are more kind of suggestions for design. Versus objective design standards, which are much more specific. They include measurable criteria. So for example, having a, you know, a minimum of a specified distance, 20 feet for a front yard setback. We all try to be visual with the standards where applicable, providing a diagram or, or table that is easily referenced for both the development community, city staff, and the public. When it comes to actually creating the design standards, we worked with the historic survey, with the, the community survey that we got, with kind of best practices. And we've developed this outline that the objective design standards will sit within. So there's an introduction and then kind of four chapters that separate out a series of design criteria. The first is site design. And this really talks about where a building is placed on the site. Building design, which talks about the design of the building itself, its form and massing. Then architectural styles, which I'll get into in a little bit more detail, and finally, landscape. So for architectural styles, we use the, the data from the historical survey. And you'll see, kind of, there's a whole list of about 10, 11 different styles. But there are really several that are more prevalent within the city. The city has a lot of variety. And we wanted to ensure that that was maintained through the objective design standards. And so we're proposing seven styles that are kind of the prominent styles within the city that we feel like are applicable to, you know, current, to the current design environment. And this is actually quite a few styles. We, you know, many cities that we work with have three or four styles. But we feel like this is really appropriate for San Fernando's variety and quality of architectural expression here.
You, actually, just go back one second.
Sure.
Right at this sound. Okay, thanks.
Great. Thank you. I'm back to wrap up the presentation. So just in closing, just want to provide our timeline. Currently, right now, this, we are currently in, well, we started the project off in, in April. And we're concluding Phase 2, which is kind of just our background research and information gathering. So after this, we're going to be, after this meeting, we're going to be rolling up our sleeves, getting some work done, preparing the actual zoning code update, objective standards. And the intent is to come back to council and reach out to the San Fernando community in early 2026 for a draft review of the document. And then return again to council for formal hearings in spring. I should, do want to add too, that because of the grant program, there is a very hard deadline of June 2026. So we're, we're anticipating to keep, to keep to the schedule so we're compliant with the grant. And just to wrap up, we do have a zoning and objective design standard survey. So anybody that's watching the line or in the audience, they can take a, take their phone out and take a picture of this QR code to take the survey. It takes approximately 10 minutes to take. And the survey will be available for, through the end of the month. And just looking for input on the community on this to help, to help guide this process. And with that, thank you and happy to answer any questions.
Who would like to start?
I guess I'll go.
Okay, Councilmember Fajardo?
Curious. Where did you see Tudor houses in San Fernando? I mean, I've seen tons of them in Pasadena, formerly Altadena, when they had a very lush variety. I only know of one contemporary house, like the one that's pictured on there. It actually belongs to one of our former council members who was an architect. And so when you have all of these styles, craftsmen's share, we have maybe a dozen, two dozen, ranch quite a bit, Spanish colonial, I'm thinking, those townhouses on McClay, maybe some other homes around it. But I have maybe like one or two mid-century. I haven't seen these like contemporary Tudors. So is this based on an actual survey of homes that you did? Or is this just like a boilerplate that's part of our presentation?
I can answer part of that. It is based upon an actual survey.
Okay.
And you're right, they're not all equally represented within the city. But we tried to pick styles that did exist within the city, had some representation, you know, of the existing architectural styles. Here, some of these are more commercially oriented. And so those got kind of removed from the list. And then we tried to keep as many of the residential styles as possible that we felt like were, you know, within kind of current buildable styles.
Got it. So for example, yeah, you have the Lopez Adobe House on the bottom, bottom left, approximately like a 630 on there. But that's not an actual house that someone lives in, but you're just seeing architecture at any place in the city, correct?
Yeah, and that, that's why we didn't necessarily pick a, you know, I think that's a Monterey revival, right? And we don't, we don't do, you know, have Monterey revival on the list because that's maybe not the best representative of both housing that's really being served as housing and what's kind of really buildable. A Monterey style is a fairly complicated style to build. And to do it right is not that economical.
Got it. So as far as these surveys go, I've had a long history in the city of concern on unscientific surveys. It can obviously be sent out to the most vocal of people who have one point of view, who circulate it amongst friends. There's no tracking where it came from. It's not something that is used evenly throughout all the demographics of the city. My personal preference is that we had some kind of citywide policy where we only use, if we use any surveys, it has to be scientifically done. But given that that's not the case and that one's obviously been implemented here, how does that go into your final recommendations, knowing that it could be heavily slanted?
That's, that's a great, that is, that is a good point. So there are certain protocols and questions that we have as part of the, as part of the survey to kind of track that. So those results that I did mention are kind of preliminary results. Since the survey's still open, we haven't kind of sifted through that information. But we have locational information, as well as the way that the, the questions were asked to kind of ensure that there's internal kind of consistency for those. And then we also have controls for location as well, too.
And is it in English and Spanish?
Yes, it is.
Got it. Okay. Again, I would just be careful basing any recommendations off that. I have a hard time believing that our 80-year-old-plus senior community is going to be as heavily engaged as some other demographics on these online surveys. So I wouldn't really want it to obscure with the, the voices of the city.
And if I may, if I may on that, so what we will have with the, with the report is essentially the complete engagement summary. So you could see information about who took it, what the results are, as well as the engagement activities. So a lot of these, approximately about half of these are, are surveys that are actually taken at the, at the pop-up events. So people attend the community event.
Thank you for that clarification. One thing that always boggles me a little is the statewide housing crisis. And it's not that I doubt it. It's the origins of it that I, that I sometimes question. And one thing that I recall is that in this past census cycle, the state of California lost an electoral vote. And isn't that because the population went down?
Yes, that's my, yes, that's, that's what I understand, yes.
So if we have the same level of housing, but a lower population, how do we have this housing crisis when our population is actually, is actually being reduced as opposed to increasing?
Now, there's definitely theories on that, and that is, that is something that I just follow. I'm not definitely, not definitely an expert on, but for what I understand on that is it's more a housing affordability crisis.
I see.
Where it is the entry, the entry level or having difficulty finding an entry-level home to live in, because rents are still increasing. The entry level kind of, house purchase is increasing as well, too. Whereas there may be, I, I don't know why the, the housing is being purchased on the higher end. But there could be, I mean, I would speculate that it may be overseas buyers or people buying multiple homes on the, on the higher end. But in terms of affordable housing, there's definitely that crisis.
Interesting. So I know you speculated overseas, and I know that you don't know that definitively. But Florida, I guess, put some policy into, or, you know, put some legislation into effect recently that has some type of limitations. And I forgot the exact details on foreign purchases. Is that something that you feel would go to address the housing crisis in Los, not in Los Angeles, sorry, in California if there were restrictions on overseas purchases from people who aren't occupying them?
And that would be something that would be implemented on the statewide level, which
Yeah.
I wouldn't be able to advise on.
Okay. Yeah, you know, I, I know of at least two homes in San Fernando that have been vacant for a really long time. One of them's been vacant for about 20 years. Another one's been vacant for about 10 years. In one of these homes, the family lives out of the country. But they want it as an appreciating stock here. So literally, someone can't even live in there as a rental. And it just becomes a stock asset. And then there's another family who actually does live locally, but similar situation where they don't want to lease it, they don't want to sell it. But you essentially have this housing crisis, at least partially exacerbated, by people who just have empty homes. I'm not even talking about empty nesters. I mean, like literally vacant homes that just sit there. I, I only know of two in the city. Maybe it is only two out of the, you know, the 6,000 or so units that we have. But my hunch is that it's, it's a lot higher than that. With regard to the density bonuses, my opinion would be that I would want us to offer whatever the lowest metric is that we can. So whatever is the minimal that we can provide to satisfy state requirements, I would more likely than not want to go with the minimal and not an iota higher. So that's where at least I am on that, on understanding those minimum criteria.
Okay. We'll move on to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you.
We have a, you know, I'm sorry, but we do have like half an hour for this item and half an hour for the other item on this agenda.
Madam Mayor.
First part of the hour.
Maybe to help facilitate discussion, there are three questions in the staff report. Ron, do you have those questions on the presentation that we could put up to facilitate the discussion for this evening? So there's three questions we have. One is a question about density bonus. The second question is about permit uses. If the council would be supportive of expanding existing retail use that's currently permitted in our downtown area to be expanded to the McClay? that's currently permitted in our downtown area to be expanded to the McClay District that's now intent for residential. And number three is, um, discussion about architectural style and, um, objective design standard. So I'll turn it to Ron.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't have, uh, Kanika pretty much summed it up. We've put the slide up on, to guide that discussion, we put that slide on, on the screen.
Okay, I'll make my comments in just a few minutes. I, um, also agree that it is important we have, uh, scientific studies so that we know they're accurate. I will say, even, um, with that concern, I noticed that the community stated, most of them, 63.6 said, "Some variety in architectural styles is appropriate for new buildings, but they should still generally match nearby homes." So, some variety, but kind of a cohesive feeling, I'm in agreement with that. Uh, most residents support allowing more neighborhood-serving small businesses. Uh, is that, is there any definition of that, of what they, what were they given when they were told? What is a s- neighborhood-serving small business?
Uh, that definition would have been, I mean, it would have been kind of based on the interpretation. And the reason why we wanted to, why we wanted to do this is we want to get, uh, kind of like the feedback of the general consensus of the community.
Okay, so I think that's pretty open to interpretation. Like, I know on Calish, there's like, uh, Kiko's or Kike's, like, little liquor store. It's so cute, it blends in, and I don't think anyone has a problem with that. So stores like that, or, or little restaurants nestled in the community, I don't think people have a problem with that. But, um, I want to make sure we don't read too much beyond what people are saying into that. And then, um, when it was talking about, um, more parks, support more parks and trail if it meant allowing for taller or denser housing, um, 32% yes, but the other 23% said yes, but only in certain areas. We don't even know what that means, it could be way out of the way. Um, and that, that also means, it was, it was, mm, a lot of people said no, like, almost 50/50, and then almost 70% were like, not in, not everywhere, not anywhere. Um, so in regards to the questions, I would not want to, um, provide additional density. I think that the state is already crushing us with their density requirements. They're already leaving so much out of our hands and forcing us to allow greater density than our neighborhoods can handle. In regard to the question as to whether the city should, um, allow uses, like, retail on McClay, I'm okay with that, it, we already have that. So, I guess they're all legal non-conforming right now, but I don't, I don't think anybody knows that. It, it looks like a retail street. Um, and I, I think that is a way maybe to alleviate housing. Where on a smaller level, we have a storefront on the bottom and a unit on top. That could help us, and that's not an apartment building, and that's not, um, so that, I mean, we have retail there, so it's always been a little bit odd to me. And then, whether we should adopt proposed architectural styles, I'm in agreement with that, just to have some kind of, um, say on what's going on in our, in our community and making sure it, um, matches. Um, I, I would, I would want the obje- objective design standards to be articulated in a way that reflect what we want, um, so that we still have some type of control. I've always heard, um, I go to a lot of conferences and I always take back information, and when they talk about housing, they say, "It's all about your general plan. You gotta have it in your plan. If you want to overcome the state forcing things on you, be specific in your plan." So I think we want to be specific in, um, having these requirements that don't take things out of our control. So whatever the setbacks are, you know, maybe we can't say setbacks, but we, someone can go out and measure it, what would be appropriate for our city. We could put that number in there, um, and the same thing with, um, the other examples. And I believe that's it, thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Um, yes, um, I'm supporting that extending that, um, business on McClay, um, combined with housing, and maybe that can help, you know, that crisis right now in that area. And also, um, I'd really, um, like to see maybe in the parks include like pet-friendly, because if we're gonna have more apartments, and those apartment will not have yard, and they don't have place for the pets, and that would be my suggestion. Um, how, my, how that SB 79 will affecting our, uh, projects here in the city of San Fernando?
So, um, SB, so SB 79, uh, I don't know the full details about it. It was just approved by the, um, the Assembly and the Senate, and is on the desk for the governor's, uh, signature. But in general, um, it would allow for, um, higher-density housing within a half-mile of a high-transit corridor. Um, and kind of looking at, um, the high-transit corridor would generally be kind of like along, uh, uh, metro bus rapid routes or the, um, the MetroLink station.
And, um, my worry is about, you know, the state's opposing us to building more. And in our city, I believe, maybe in, in the last past 20 years, I don't see building like more than three or four. Now with this new bill, do we, we require it to have like maybe six, seven? And, and different areas, how that will work? Can you explain a little bit on that?
Um, so, the, um, this, what, what this law would generally, what this law would generally do would allow for the framework. So already, there are, there are state laws that allow for, um, residential and commercial, so allows for the framework. But, um, there are certain provisions, requirements, that always need to be met to kind of qualify, um, for these. So those specifics is, um, why there's an incremental increase, but it's really kind of driven by those regulations, as well as kind of like the market as well, too. So with building costs and things, all that kind of factors into what gets developed.
Um, hmm, they can, we'd be more specific to have, like, more, no more housing, or more, no more buildings, like, like maybe five, or more than three floor?
Well, what I, what I think, I, in my recommendation for the best thing where the city has the most control is the objective, um, design standards. So in that document, every, every single state law, uh, always references that the project shall comply with the city's objective standards. So I think that, that component is where the, uh, the city has the control. Um, and when we kind of come back for the draft document, I think we can, you know, we'll, uh, have the discussion about, about that. And it will have a better understanding of SB 79 then as well, too, if it's signed.
Thank you so much, no more questions.
Okay, for, um, item, number one, uh, I don't support that item at all. It's, uh, I don't support any high-density. And on number two, it's, um, I don't want to see more, uh, I, I'd like to see the, the commercial throughout all of McClay. Whatever we have in, in the mall, we should have it all throughout McClay, should be equal. And, um, for number three, it's, um, I think it's good to have, uh, different styles of architecture in different, uh, neighborhoods. It should have clear, um, objective design styles. I, I don't want to see big, uh, square buildings, you know, in any of that area. And, um, let me see. Yeah, just, uh, different, uh, architectural designs, I think that's important, so basically that's it. And then I do, do agree in terms of the, the data that's collected. Um, you know, it was, uh, I was surprised where they, uh, were interested in having high-density because I feel a lot, a lot of our community aren't into the high-density. So that kind of caught my eye, I'm not sure where the, the data was collected. So, I'd like to see the final outcome of that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, for that comprehensive, uh, feedback and input. We will now get to work, uh, with drafting those documents for release in September. And, uh, rest assured, we're, we're, um, uh, we're complying with the, uh, community engagement plan as approved by the City Council. So we'll go out, um, and present that to the community when those documents are ready. Thank you again.
We'll move on to the next item. And this is, uh, receive and file a presentation regarding the city climate action resilience plan and associated general plan update to the open space conservation parks and recreation element and mobility element. Consultants Hannah May, Mize, Ringcon Consultants, Senior Climate Action and Adaptation Planner. Della Costa, Ringcon Consultants, Senior Long Range Planner. Ms. Kit, please provide presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna turn this over to Ron Garcia to, um, provide the presentation.
Thank you, Kanika. Again, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, excited to bring this update to the City Council on the, uh, work efforts related to the Climate Action Resilience Plan that the consultant staff has been working on, uh, for several years now, um, uh, as it relates to how the city, um, reacts to, uh, climate change. I'm happy to introduce, uh, Hannah Mize from Ringcon Consultants, thank you.
Uh, your time tonight, oh, there we go, I can hear myself, all right. We are rocking. Um, again, Hannah from Ringcon Consultants. We're gonna talk about the Climate Action and Resilience Plan, as well as the General Plan Update. There's two elements specifically, uh, that we're updating as part of this effort, and it really builds on the work that, uh, John mentioned earlier as far as the zoning. It all really ties in, so excited to present tonight to you. All right. There we go. So we have the team, um, we have Ron, Marina, myself, and then Della overseeing the general plan side of things. Really want to recognize, uh, the partners of this project as well, though. This is an entirely group effort. Um, it includes the Pocahontas Beautiful, Climate Resolve, the Tribe, and, uh, funded and sponsored by LCI. So really, really cool project. Um, it's tied in a lot of different community partners and CBOs to really get feet on the ground and provide that engagement and outreach throughout. Um, I, I don't, uh, think anyone here tonight, maybe online, is from those entities, but just massive, um, props to that group. It was really, really cool to see all of this in action. I don't know if you guys saw us at any of the pop-up events, but, um, as John mentioned, we were, we were at a bench as well. All right, so kind of going through the couple of core components of this project, there's two core deliverables, that Climate Action Resilience Plan and a General Plan Element Update to the Open Space Conservation Parks and Recreation Element and the Mobility Element. The General Plan in total has 11 elements, but these, um, are being updated as part of this process. They're each kind of done on, on a, um, scheduled timeframe, so I'm sure you all are familiar with the others that have come through, um, reviews and whatnot. But want to make sure that we're doing this in, in a, um, a process that really aligns with the CARP because there is a lot of overlap. Again, this is funded by LCI, and it's due at the end of this year, so we are cranking. Um, it aligns also with the strategic goals of the City Council, so really want to recognize how important this is from, you know, the top-down in the community. We've had a lot of really good insight, um, and information through the various pop-ups and surveys. We can speak a little bit more to that, but want to just kind of go through the overall framework. As mentioned, it really was, from the start of this, uh, a team process, a really neat, um, grant opportunity where, you know, the, the city needed a climate action plan, Pocahontas Beautiful, Climate Resolve, and the Tribe had a lot of different connections within the community, and were able to identify resources to make sure that we're, uh, developing a plan that aligns with the community needs. And one of the really cool things about this plan is we did a lot of outreach at the forefront. We did some analysis, I'll speak to that here shortly, um, about what, what the background does, but really did that analysis, and then took the background analysis to the community to hear what they thought, what their concerns wa- are, grounded that in reality. And now we're developing the measures and actions, which really is how we get here. This CARP, or Climate Action Resilience Plan, sets a roadmap to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and help prepare and adapt to climate change. Um, it was a really interesting, uh, piece. A lot of folks, about 80% of their survey respondents so far, mentioned that they have experienced climate change. And again, this was, uh, surveys that we did at pop-ups, as well as online, so we had a lot of insight there. Um, also identifies actionable strategies, measures, and actions that really align with those community hurdles that were identified, and helps the city overcome them, while also supporting the state goals of SB 32 to reduce, uh, emissions, uh, 40% below 1990 levels by 2030, so that's coming up pretty quick, and then reaching carbon neutrality by 2045. So, really putting us on the trajectory to do that in an equitable, in a feasible way for the city. One of the coolest things about plans like this, um, it really unlocks additional grant funding. So, as we identify, you know, different initiatives, um, and projects and programs that we want to put into this, it's similarly to the General Plan, if they're in the plan and there's a, a documentation that this is a goal of the city, it really provides a step forward to get that funding and make sure that it's implementable and implemented. On the other side of the coin, we have the General Plan Elements, the Open Space Conservation Parks and Recreation, which updates analysis on those natural, natural spaces and aligns with some of the requirements, uh, such as, uh, 1425, which requires open space elements to address climate change in the newest versions. We also have the Mobility Element, and that promotes service and multi-mobility transportation. So again, really, really aligning with that Climate Action and Resilience Plan, identifying opportunities, uh, to make things easier and more accessible for the community, while aligning with the state goals. The CARP, a little bit of an overarching document, actually, uh, overlines or overlaps with the CARP as well. So there's a lot of, um, continuity there. It's a really cool process. I think that the city is undertaking all of these initiatives at once. It's not always done this way, a lot of the times, cities do one thing, another, and then kind of a third or fourth. This is a really cool opportunity to align the General Plan, the CARP, and the zoning code that John mentioned, and really tie in all of the things that, uh, we want to see in one pla- you know, one place in multiple plans, so it's really consistent. All right, how we got here. And I know I'm talking fast, I just want to leave time for questions, so, uh, appreciate you guys rolling with me. We got here, at the start of this, over about 18 months, two years ago, we presented to City Council. We did a background, um, inventory greenhouse gas emissions analysis. I'm sure you can see it a little bit closer on your screens, but we have the blue or the side on the, on the right there. Uh, that's on-road transportation emissions across the board that are aligned with the, uh, rest of the jurisdictions, you know, in the state and in the region. Transportation emissions are generally the highest percentage, followed by building energy, solid waste, off-road emissions, and then wastewater. Excuse me. So that allows us to really focus in, once we understand where the emissions come from, focus in measures and actions on how to reduce those. So how do we make, uh, on, on-road transportation less, um, A, cumbersome, easier for people to do, and get A to B, but also reduce those emissions? And kind of focusing on those, uh, specific entities? We also did a climate change vulnerability assessment. Uh, that aligned essentially data from CalAdapt, the County of Los Angeles, uh, the state, the, uh, federal data, and aligned, uh, provided projections for future, uh, climate risks. Things like extreme heat, air quality impacts from wildfires, floods, from, uh, stormwater, stuff like that, and really identified those risks so we could start to identify opportunities to adapt to these biggest concerns. We took all of this information, and we took it out to the community. We've had, uh, a couple of workshops, we had walkshops, which were really cool. Again, um, shout-out to Climate Resolve, essentially grabbed, you know, different, um, data sources and technologies so you could take, uh, infrared photos of things, you could measure heat, measure air quality, measure noise pollution. We walked around the community with different folks, uh, we provided tours in Spanish and English, and then took that feedback, said, "Hey, what are you, what are you seeing? And is this, is the data that we're sharing with you about these things, extreme heat, et cetera, matching your lived experiences? And if not, how do we calibrate?" So that happened during the workshops, I'm sorry, the walkshops, the workshops. We presented information, and then prov- got, uh, provided opportunities for feedback and said, "Hey, what do you want to see? You know, how, how do you see the city in five years, 10 years, 20 years? And what does that, what does that mean to you? And how do we prevent any hurdles that may arise?" We had the pop-ups, and then we had the survey. Um, these survey results we're showing are online. I know the value of a scientific ser- survey, so I super appreciate that. Uh, if there's a question on it, happy to answer it. But this one is more, um, I would say, you know, high-level, we're taking it with a grain of salt. One thing, though, I do think is really, really just incredible about this survey is over about 55, 60% of the respondents had never participated in the planning process before. So we are reaching people who maybe, you know, traditionally, you have a, a set of folks that participate. This one, we were able to reach new people, which I think is a really cool representation, and partly going out and meeting people where they are, was, it was how we were able to do that. All right, we took this, uh, earlier, well, last week, to the Planning and Preservation Commission, and we got some really good feedback, so we wanted to share that. In general, their support for emphasized visible and community-focused improvements, such as tree planting, shade, and park amenities. There's also mention of, um, you know, those kind of emergency beacons on different- There's also mention of, you know, those kind of emergency beacons on different trails, things like the train track, making things more accessible for folks. An emphasis on strategies that are practical, affordable, and tailored to the city of San Fernando, really recognizing how important it is to develop initiatives that match the needs and wants of the community members, focusing on urban greening to reduce urban heat island impacts, providing safe pathways. Increasing the trolley use was a really cool one. We've talked about that a lot and about how it's a really cool viable option. It's something that, you know, pops around the city in all sorts of capacities and just letting people know, providing education about how you can get A to B and how fun or cool it is. And you can, you know, read your book, or play on your phone, or do nothing, which sounds lovely. We also have an emphasis on parks and recreation priorities, really recognizing, earlier you had mentioned pet spaces, but that was something that came up, pet shade. Having more community programs was something that people were really interested in. And then having potential opportunities for recycled water, while really maintaining the cultural, like the heritage, the community, and the things that really makes San Fernando great. There were also a couple of concerns, recognizing that some of our native plants maybe use more water or less. How do we balance that? And then really reducing parking, there was a concern about that, as well as prioritizing EV infrastructure. So wanted to just be super transparent about what we've heard and want to get some feedback from this team. So as far as next steps go, we're meeting today. We have completed that background analysis. We collected community feedback. We're going to take what we've heard from the community, from the Planning Commission tonight, from you all, and take that back and draft the initiatives, the measures, the actions, and then wrap all of that up into a plan. The real heart of our document, of the Climate Action Plan and of the General Plan, is those policies. And then the rest of the document is a lot of the background, the regulations, that kind of stuff that we have pretty well drafted. So per San Fernando. So that stuff's going to be pulled in, and then we'll have another Planning Commission meeting, kind of share out the measures and actions that we've drafted based on feedback, meet with you again in December, and then take it for adoption in January. I know we had mentioned that December due date. The SEQA piece is not funded by that grant, so it can go a little bit after, but really want to recognize how do we keep it all within January and keep that timeframe. And I think, can open it up for questions. Wanted to get some feedback from you all on these different themes. We have shared themes between the CARP and the General Plan, which are mobility, specifically bike paths, resilient parks, and open spaces, recognizing that benefit of preservation and having efficient buildings. And then when we're talking about the CARP, there's a little bit of a separate component that that includes, which is expanding resilience, making sure that as there are risks to climate change, are we able to adapt, overcome, and be prepared for that? Are, you know, are people able to stay in their homes in these emergencies, et cetera? Increasing organic diversion rate, you know, throwing food waste into the composting section and then enhancing water resilience. And then really this last one, leading by example, if the city can show that, you know, we can do it at the city level, it's easier for the community to do it. I'm a big fan of not asking others to do what I'm not willing to do. And so if we're able to show, hey, we're willing to, and here's how we can do it, it really makes it easier for others. So with that, again, I just want to say thank you to the, you know, partners and pass it back to Ron.
Thank you, Hannah. Mayor and City Council, I know we're pressed on time. So we just want to gain some feedback from the City Council as we move on to that next phase and developing the actual measures and actions as Hannah has described and developing those documents, those final policy documents, informing that Climate Action Resiliency Plan for the city of San Fernando. Thank you.
Okay, we have about eight minutes.
So I think maybe to help facilitate discussion, Julia, if you can put up page 23 from the agenda packet so the council could do a quick run-through. There's three components to this item. One is the Climate Action Resilience Plan, and there's a list of questions for the council to provide comments on. The other two are the General Plan Update for Mobility, for the Circulation Element Update, and the Open Space and Parks. So maybe we can take the rest of the minute just for council to provide some high-level comments to us. I also would like to share that we can also, if any council have additional comments or feedback, we're happy to receive those feedback from council through emails or if you want to schedule a one-on-one meeting with staff, with Ron Garcia and myself to talk more about it. We're happy to do that as well to keep the project moving.
Thank you. Councilmember Fajardo?
You had the questions that you wanted answered specifically. Is she putting that on the screen?
Yes. So we'll go to Proposed Area for City Input. That's the first component. That's for the Climate Action and Resilience Plan. Can you move that up a bit, Julia?
So each of these points, correct?
Yes.
So expand use of San Fernando trolley for local trips. I just know that there's a long-term cost with it. I'd also like to have some feedback on money that it might take away from street improvements in the future. I know that I made a comment broadly to that effect at a previous council meeting. I know that Ms. Melton told me that maybe it was a little misguided. Those weren't her words, but I would like a little more feedback on that before. It sounds good on paper, but whether it's financially feasible is a different story, especially the way it was described to me before, which is that we have the state money. It'll eventually run out, and then it's almost going to exclusively come out of money that should have been for our streets. Again, if that was described incorrectly, I'd like to know that. Increase electrical vehicle adoption in residential and commercial sectors. I think that that's great. Residential would predominantly be up to the residences themselves, though, and commercial. We do have a charging station. It's only for Tesla, ideally, even though Tesla's probably the main electrical vehicle supplier right now. I would like to see it as more universal for people who have different vehicles, especially with the Tesla brand taking a bit of a dump recently in the public sphere. Grow active transportation options, including bike paths. I don't know what it means by grow. I think that we have the bike paths, but if there's more examples of growing it, I'd be open to that. Expand urban tree canopy, native landscaping, yes, 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 and permeable surfaces for stormwater. This is an absolute top of the line, a top priority. I would love to see us have a mature tree canopy. We've planted these little trees over the years, and people complain that they're getting shrubs or weeds, and they don't feel that it, that the trees that we're getting are replacing the older, mature trees that they used to see in the city. Support climate smart retrofits for historic buildings. I think for all buildings. And, you know, even our residential resale requirements, we have some in place. Maybe we even expand them. So I don't mind that. Require resilient new construction capable of standing climate hazards. Yes, I presume that we already have some of those, but if we don't, I'd be open to seeing more. And enhance the reliability of the water supply to prepare for droughts, emergencies, and infrastructure risks. Absolutely. I don't even know if it's possible to add this on there, but this is a food for thought before I exhaust my last 10 seconds. I would really like, as we plan to revitalize Cindymontañez Natural Park, to think of it as a habitat for the monarch butterfly. When I was speaking about it at a meeting, the chief spoke to me after. He's like, there's actually a place in Florida or some southern state where they actually have a huge habitat. So I would love for us to be a national center, recognized for monarch butterfly preservation. So those are all my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. I'll just go quickly. I do think because extreme heat and poor air quality are a big issue in San Fernando, when we talk about resilient parks and open spaces, I am more, I am in favor of adding parks and, sorry, adding trees to our parks much more than the native landscaping. I think when one of the community concerns was aesthetics of native plants, they often look, it looks like a desert or like weeds. And so I would rather us have a sanctuary for our community. I think we need the green spaces. We need the trees. We need that as a cooling measure, a greater tree canopy and shade. So I just, I don't know if I've seen bad examples, but I'm just not a fan of the, when they say native landscaping, because it often means no greenery. And I would hate for that to be our parks. So expand the use of San Fernando trolley for local trips. I like that idea. Increase EV adoption. I would like us to study how they're used now. Are they at capacity or over capacity, or are they not being used? And if we can come back and maybe base our recommendation on that, is there a greater need for them? Then we should implement it. If not, then I don't know that we spend the money there. Grow transportation options, including bike paths. I, right now, a big proponent of maintaining our bike path. It is not doing so well. And so I think we have a lot of work to do. The lighting, to make it safe. I think we can add a lot of greenery there and update that. So I would say let's do a good job of that before we add paths. I don't even know where the paths would be. And that's also an option for us to partner with Metro, which would also meet a goal. So the rest of them, good. And of course, the water supply. As far as the other items for council input, yes, prioritize regional partnership coordination and improve bike paths, again. Establish an urban greening district. I don't know that we need to do that. I would like our city to be a green city. So I don't know where that one district would be. And then promote climate adaptive parks. Again, not in favor of it if it means a park of, which looks like weeds, but we can do smart irrigation. And I think that this is an opportunity in our water plan. Maybe we want to do a purple line or use recycling water for that, so that we are actually being good stewards of our resources, but providing our residents the same thing that Pasadena and Montrose residents have. And I think I'm gonna pass it on.
Councilmember Lopez?
I'm just going to be quickly. I just want to see more like pet-friendly in our parks. And maybe we can start with one, and maybe in the future, we can add it more. The other part, I, we've been asking, well, I have some concern for the residents to have restrooms in the parks, especially in the Cindymontañez, if it's possible to have maybe something more stable in that area. And maybe if we can evaluate it, the parts that we have that green, that green area, because I know the San Fernando park are not in the best condition right now, and we invest a lot of money in the park, and it's not all grass. And, you know, the families are not using the park so much. So I would like to see that, maybe some repairs in the restrooms and all that parts that can be helpful. And that's going to be all my comments, Mayor.
Thank you. I liked all the ideas that our council members have given. I'm not going to give any of my ideas at this time since we're already done with the meeting, 6:01. But I will review what you've said and then send my comments to Ms. Kith and elaborate on some of your items as well. But, you know, I do like the greening and also I like the trolley, also a survey on the trolley, which may be something to come, because I'd like to see if we could add more to the route as well. Maybe soon we can do that. So anyway, those are my most important things and greening. But, so thank you so much to Ringcon and for coming out, and we appreciate your presentations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ron. So at this time, if there's no further discussion, the special meeting is adjourned. It is now time, it is now 6:01 PM, and I call the San Fernando Regular Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Patty Lopez?
Present.
Councilmember Victoria Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember Joe Fajardo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mary Solodio. She is absent. Mayor Mary Mendoza?
Present. We have a quorum. All City Council members in attendance are physically present, and no members are participating remotely for today's meeting. Madam City Clerk, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. Will everyone please rise? Hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, we a nation under God. Thank you. You may be seated.
At this time, I'll be asking for approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
All moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solodio is absent. Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Anyone wishing to make a public comment, statement, please fill out the blue form and submit to the city clerk. The next item on the agenda is presentations. And information presentation from the State Senator Caroline Menjivar. Is she here? Is she here at this time?
Madam Mayor, the center is pulling up right now into our parking lot, so give her a few minutes. Thank you.
We'll give her a few minutes to get here.
So literally after we finished our presentation on the climate resiliency, my phone had a photo album for me that says "Nature's Bliss." Isn't that crazy? Does the phone, like, have some kind of mechanism to create that? And it has all these photos of natural habitats that have taken pictures of. Either it's just a sign.
Just taking a few minutes for the senator to arrive. Welcome. Yeah, thank you. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, city of San Fernando. How are we? I'm so excited. This is my first time providing a legislative update to this city. It's been three wonderful years thus far. In 10 minutes, I'm going to try to go over as many things as possible. Two days ago, we finished our legislative session at a day past what we were supposed to finish, and I sent 10 bills to the governor's desk. He has until October 12 to look into signing them. The core of the things that I'm always looking to look to pass are things that come from the district. So I have a bill that looks to address the silicosis crisis in our backyards occurring in Pacoima and Sun Valley, where 98% of the cases, approximately 380 in the state of California, are occurring to Latino men working in fabrication shops where they're cutting countertops that are on our kitchen counters. Unfortunately, they are inhaling the silica dust, and once that happens, you have about 18 to three years of a lifespan before, if you don't get a double lung transplant, to die. So SB 20, after Senate District 20 is in the governor's desk, a Latino Legislative Caucus priority to bring additional training. It would require employers to submit a self-attestation that say that they trained their employees on this safe practice. It would also make silicosis a serious injury that would allow for Cal OSHA to come and ensure that those businesses are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Two other bills are related to health. One of them, if you don't remember, last year I passed SB 79, the first in California, to have us be part of the 14 states that cover fertility services. Approximately 9 million people starting in January will have access to IVF covered by their insurance or IUI if you work for an employer with 100 employees. That's starting in January. I came back this year for part two, to have that coverage for small and individual plans. We're talking about those uncovered California, people who have 1099s and have to pay through covered California. We've submitted a plan to the state, to the federal government, and if they approve it with my bill, it would codify fertility services, durable And if they approve it with my bill, it would codify fertility services, durable medical equipment. We're talking about motorized wheelchairs, canes to be covered under, uh, their plan and hearing aids. Because right now, unfortunately, in the state of California, you are by law told if your child is born with hard of hearing or deaf, but they do not cover those hearing aids. And every three years, when the little kids' ears are constantly growing, you have to pay $3,000 to $6,000 for new hearing aids because health insurance does not cover that. Does not cover that. So with my bill, if the federal government allows, we will have those coverage, um, immediately as soon as they approve it. Another bill that was, it's near and dear to my heart. I, like four million people in California, grew up in what's called a bubble because I'm allergic to a lot of things. And we're talking fruits, uh, uh, nuts and a lot of other things. When you go to the EU, you'll see on the menu at a restaurant, all the things that each meal has in terms of allergens. Is it sesame? Is it shellfish? Is it nuts? Does it have dairy in it? We do not have that here in California. In fact, no state in the United States requires a restaurant to put their allergens on the menu. I'm looking to change that and be the first in the United States. And while I have a lot of allergies, I never thought about introducing a bill like this, um, on my own. It was a nine-year-old girl that came to my office and said, Senator, I think we need to change this in California. And with her tenacity and with her mom, we grew a big coalition and now it is at the governor's desk. We've trimmed it to only have this applied to restaurants with 20 locations or more, trying to be mindful of the smaller locations and then do a ramp up, ramp up, uh, to include everyone else. I have things regarding, um, the ADD population, individuals with developmental disability. A big passion of mine, that, uh, that demographic. We want to make sure the ombuds person, the person that is in charge of ensuring if families make complaints, they can investigate, has the authority to actually investigate, actually do the work and support families when they have a complaint. Uh, we work closely with the state department on this. So I have a good feeling that the governor will sign this because we worked in partnership with him on that. Another bill I'd like to talk about is, uh, really new in the state of California. And each time you introduce a bill, they do an analysis and they write in the history part of all the previous legislation that's happened in this space. And it was empty because there hasn't been legislation in this space. Self-storage facilities. Self-storage facilities are often used. College students, military individuals, people who get evicted from their homes, put all their livelihood into a self-storage. And they're pulled in because they'll say, one, first month is free. $1 for the first month. And you're like, yes, I'm gonna go that there. That's a great deal. What happens is, and there has been a leak, uh, at a conference in Vegas talking about owners that they do this in a preparatory or in, I would say maybe in a malice approach, where then they triple, quadruple your rate within three months. I, as a legislator, always have to take my things out of my apartment in Sacramento and I put my stuff in a storage. Within the first four months, my rent for the storage jumped 38% within four months. I have no pity on me. I am a state legislator, but I'm thinking about individuals, uh, that aren't middle, middle-class. Imagine having to pay 38% more. So my bill SB 709 is the first step. It's not capping the rent, but it's requiring these facilities to put on their contracts. How long is the promotion for? And what's the max you're gonna pay in the first 12 months? So you want to make that good decision. Should I stay here for a dollar a month? Is it okay that I'm gonna pay $400 later in a couple of months? We want consumers to make that decision on their own. We passed, uh, things on budget this year that are really, really big to address or respond to the HR 1 bill that was passed in the federal government. The federal government has cut $300 million for the state of California in terms of reproductive health, essentially defunding Planned Parenthood. We were able to, uh, provide 70 million this year to address that hole. Obviously, it's not even 50% of what is being lost. Um, we are gonna be in the whole eight to nine billion dollars in the healthcare space because HR 1 is cutting a lot in the healthcare space. Uh, we are also in the hole for CalFresh EBT on, um, uh, on the federal side. And we were able to put in $20 million to hold us a little bit, to get ready because for CalFresh, starting in October, we are required to now do, um, work requirements for everyone who has, who has CalFresh. If you are a 16-year-old on CalFresh, you will have to prove that you are working a certain amount. I mean, it goes up to, I believe it was 63 years old, if I'm not mistaken. I came back to you on that, on that age. And you are a, you're an abled body. Brand new for us. It was supposed to kick in in February. They came back to us a couple of weeks ago saying it kicks in in October and we have to get ready for that ASAP. Uh, next year, starting in January, we unfortunately will no longer allow undocumented individuals, undocumented individuals, legal permitted residents who've been in California for five, for less than five years, asylum seekers, um, DV victims on T or UVs to sign up for Medi-Cal. Will no longer be able to sign up for Medi-Cal. I highly encourage everybody to sign up now until December 31st because you no longer will be able to. That's gonna be a big shift for us. If you are in those five categories as well, you won't have dental coverage, um, anymore under Medi-Cal as well. We're creating unfortunately, a tiered system of who gets what and who doesn't. Uh, we also passed to approve $3.8 billion for Prop 4 funding. Prop 4 funding is what we all voted for last November to fund things related to water, parks, our, our, our environment, climate, fire mitigation. And just this, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, we put money in different buckets. Uh, we are getting money in the Santa Monica Conserva- Conservis- It's a word that's hard for me to say, conservatorcy? Nope, not even gonna try. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, which is the part that we're in right now, uh, to fund, to do bids. So it's not for specific projects. Cities, nonprofits will be able to then put in a bid under those pockets. Um, we were able to, really proud of this, uh, to put in a bucket for parkport areas, specific, uh, in, um, in the San Fernando region and LA region. We are blessed that one of our budget chairs on the assembly is from the San Fernando Valley. That's Assembly Member Jesse Gabriel. And he helps us squeeze in a little bit of money in there. Uh, we are gonna be able to revamp the, uh, Orange Line at, in Wide Oak Louise area for a more Olympic, uh, beautification project because a lot of people are gonna be getting off that stop to go into the Sepulveda Basin where a lot of the games are gonna hap- are gonna be happening during the Olympics. So more to come on that. I'm gonna be watching to make sure as soon as those RVPs, those grants or RFPs are ready to go, I'm gonna distribute to all my cities and say, hey, now is the time to apply and reach out for that. Fire stations, brush clearance, parks, um, any open spaces like that. ADA, this is, these are the pockets of, of money that we can turn to. Other things that is very important is that we, uh, re- extended or re-approved what's called Cap'n Trade. It's a program that's been in existence for about 20 years and now called Cap'n Invest, where we find or we allow entities to pollute our air, but, but pay us for polluting and putting it into a pot, into a pot. And it creates approximately three to four billion dollars annually, depending on the market. And we use those funds for projects. In the $3.4 billion pot, one billion of that goes directly to High Speed Rail to continue funding High Speed Rail. The reauthorization of Cap'n Trade has been approved until 2045. So until 2045, the state of California will continue to give $1 billion to the High Speed Rail for its completion. The sad news is, for all of us, we won't see that come to us until 2075. The year, 2075. Unless something changes and they speed it up, I don't know. I gotta do the math quickly in my head if I'm still gonna be alive during that time. But it's gonna be phenomenal for the next generation and we will be able to get to and from LA and San Francisco in a quick, um, time. Our concern there was that we didn't get equitable investment in transit for urban areas like LA and the Bay Area. We requested a lot of money. We did not get that, um, request, uh, materialized, but we will continue to fight. However, we did get, not we, there is $125 million for a transit pass to help do connectors. There's gonna be another, um, let me see, uh, $400 million for the Transportation Agency on Transit and Intercity Rail Capital Program. But you have 120 legislators that are gonna be fighting for that pot to bring here. There's also gonna be $1 billion that 120 legislators are also gonna be arguing about how to spend, but it's gonna be up to our discretion how much or where the funding is distributed there. Another really important thing I want to share with you is around the climate credit. I don't know if you know, if you have SoCal, a gas, you get a credit, um, once a year. Sometimes they break it up in twice a year, where if you've seen on your bill, it says you owe nothing. You have a credit because that is funded through the Cap'n Invest program. Polluters pay into this fund. It goes back to the utility companies. Utility companies then bring it down to their consumers for credit. Uh, we just passed to say that gas customers will no longer get that credit and all of the credit is gonna go to your electric bill. So because we live in an area where we have two different utilities for gas and, um, elec- uh, electricity, we will no longer get the gas credit. It's gonna go to our electricity. However, I do want to note, there are more customers in the electricity section. So we might see a little less credit back on your, on your, um, on your bill. It's, can be very confusing. And in 10 minutes, it's not, I can't give you all the details, but be happy to explain a little bit later. Um, we also gave a free pass to Kern County to drill more, to do 2,000 wells a year. So if you're living in Kern, it's gonna be really rough because the air is gonna be really bad. However, some people are saying that might allow our gas prices to go down a couple of cents because we won't be bringing oil from the Amazons in South America. We'll be able to bring the oil from our own backyards and it'll be cheaper for us. Other bills that I want to talk about is regarding the nurse-patient ratios. Uh, I am in the health space a lot. I am the health chair for the state of California on the senate side. So I do a lot in this space. And I want to make sure that our nurses are getting the support they need to care of our, for our loved ones. There are nurse-patient ratios that exist right now in California, but they're not being enforced. We have one of the highest percentage rates of nurses leaving the bedside. They're not in our hospitals anymore because they are burnt out. And, uh, my bill that was passed is to ensure that hospitals are doing what they're supposed to be doing to adhere to, uh, to that law. Okay. Um, I want to share that while you may not see me here in San, in the city of San Fernando, you see Brandon 24/7. Uh, Brandon has in 2024 went to 24 events here in the city. And this year, we're up to 19 and the year is not over. It's coming out to two a month and he has other communities that he goes to. So we're very proud of that. We've attended three different, uh, ribbon cuttings in the past couple of months. Target being the only one here in your city, uh, the UPS behind where we are right now and the FTBMI, uh, Senior Housing Project. My staff stays up to date with all your community events and, and your, um, your, your council meetings. In fact, you've seen a couple of my staff come and give public comment on my behalf or on their behalf because they're very engaged. Uh, we have attended your annual pride flag raise, uh, raising, the annual SFA, uh, high school principal lunch. And just this past weekend, your first año el grito that I am so sad that I missed because of that extra day that they let, had us stay in Sacramento. The last event that I attended was the one where I saw some of you. I was at the plaque recognition for the, in, for the, the men at, um, at the park. And the next one I'll be having here is gonna be with the coffee with the City Chamber of Commerce on November 7th at Bo Devi. So I invite anyone to come. We're gonna do a, a round table there on our business. I don't, I think I hit 10 minutes? I'd like to now leave the next 10 minutes for questions from the council.
Thank you, Senator Menjivar. Uh, Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes, well, thank you for that. I would have listened to 20, 30, 40 more minutes. It's really exciting to hear all the great things that you're working on. And you never have to apologize for not being here enough. I know that you have an enormous geographic territory that you cover. Um, but as you mentioned, we do see you at events and if you're not able to make it, your staff's always here. So you know, first of all, thank you for all the advocacy that you've had for our community in Sacramento. Some of these bills are absolutely incredible and I'm glad to see them go to, to come to fruition and for the governor to sign them. I did want to know if there were any updates regarding the ballot measure that's coming up in November. As you know, I told you that I've been a huge proponent of this before it was even on the radar. Uh, I fell in love with the ballot measure 10 or so years ago when it looked like it was a great thing that all of the states would follow. And then I saw that Democrats were simply disarming themselves from being able to, uh, to exercise the same, to, to, to be able to exercise the same rules that other states had. And so I wanted to know if there were any updates regarding that, um, that, uh, that ballot measure and what we can do to advocate for it and help it pass?
Absolutely. And I, I want to make sure, I, I don't know the rules of the council here, if I can bleed into political conversations. Um, I can tell you what we did on the legislative side. The legislative side, we voted a couple of weeks ago to approve, uh, to place a special election on November 4th. So we were able to vote for that. And we were able to also vote for legislation of what we were gonna vote for on November 4th. That now has turned into Prop 50. And Prop 50, people will start seeing ballots drop in about a month. It's the same setup where you get your ballots sent to your home about a month before the election. This is a mid, mid-cycle election. Uh, there is concern that people are not gonna know that this is happening. And what we're doing is trying to share as much as we can to let people know what this is for. What is this for? I shared with you some of the cuts that are happening right now. Just today, just today, Vaughn, which you have in your city, was told that the federal government just cut a grant for $20 million over the next three years. And it is a gut-wrenching cut where they're gonna lay people off. The state cannot step in and help. Um, they could try to go through the courts and try to sue for a stay and, and that could save them some time. But the contract, they just told will end September 30th in 15 days. Okay? What this proposition would mean is that it would allow for us to have the ability for that not to happen anymore. A vote for Prop 50 would mean that we don't have to cut CalFresh for people, like I mentioned. A vote for Prop 50 would mean that I don't have to, during, during this interim, my fall break, figure out how to save as many people on health insurance because of the eight to nine billion cuts we're gonna see in healthcare. Food pantries are gonna be skyrocketing in the terms of need because of the cuts. Uh, we're being told that there's gonna be a lot of cuts to Title I. We have a lot of Title I schools. I have a lot of Title I schools in my district. We can't fill the hole of the gap in the state of California. We are, yes, the fourth largest and yet we still don't have enough to fill the gaps there. So Prop 50 would mean, councilmember, that we have a fighting chance. It's not a guarantee, but a fighting chance that we can stop the cuts that are coming down to California. Um, and there's a lot more cuts coming to clinics that a lot of community members around this area depend on. So we're gonna do a lot through my own political side, nothing through my office. We're not allowed to because it's now a political campaign.
Well, thank you so much and I hope to be able to assist in any way that I can with that. Was there, I had heard, because I know, I know many people who are going to support it. I know some people who aren't going to support it. I guess one of the things that I heard from a couple of people who aren't supporting it, it's that there was no cost associated with that. I, I'm not really sure exactly what they mean. Like was a cost for the election not presented with the bill? Or do you know exactly what that's referring to?
Uh, so there is gonna be a, every single city is, or county is gonna have a cost and the state is gonna be bringing a little bit of that funding. I think if I'm not mistaken, this is gonna cost about $283 million for the state of California.
So does the city pay for it or the state or a combination?
The state, the state will always bring down the funding necessary for the counties to put on those elections.
Uh, and then my last question is, I know that we've had many discussions since I've been on the council about having a housing crisis and part of that is, you know, additional development. But I've always felt that there's been maybe one stone that's been unturned, which is that there are a large number of homes in the city and probably the state that are either held by foreign interests and therefore not occupied throughout the year or sometimes even local people and they just have an extra house and they never use it. And it prevents families who are struggling financially from finding good housing. In addition to the building that is taking place, is there any kind of traction in Sacramento to address the, in my opinion anyhow, the crisis of these vacant homes, um, that are being, that preclude families from living in them?
Councilmember, that's a great question. Uh, council member, that's a great question and, and it's, it's layered, right? Um, I had a bill I introduced this year and it died early in the process regarding vacancies.
Oh no.
It did, um, and it came out of just my idea and I think next year I'll have conversations with stakeholders, I immediately thought a vacancy tax, and because I was like, how else can we get people to ensure that they're developed, they're rented out and they don't sit on them until the market is great? And then they sell them or do what they do, or short leases, right? Because I have areas that are, have dilapidated buildings, broken windows, and they're just sitting empty and then people come in, are squatters, and then they catch on fire. So I was looking to address that, it didn't go far. However, we are also looking at a housing bond next year. Um I have the uh transition age youth part of the housing bond in the legislation where I want to make sure part of the funds allocate funding for those in, uh I believe it's from like seventeen until the age of twenty-four, a lot of homeless kids, foster kids in that, in that section. My colleague Senator Cabaldin has the other part of the housing bond and we'll see what happens there if we put it on, on the ballot for next November to have funding for housing. Um the other conversations around that are streamlining. In the budget this year, they removed so much Sequel from housing that passed in July, um so we're going to see a lot of change. SB seventy-nine, which I know the city vote, you know, was opposed to it and all my cities were opposed to it, um, was looking to address the housing crisis, but I felt in a way that, I felt it was the third or fourth step when the first step in my, in my communities haven't even been met. If my business corridors still have a lot of potential for building, why aren't we building on those business corridors versus going a half a mile away from those areas, right? So that was my concern on that, but I think, council member, the biggest thing that happened this year that's going to address housing crisis is the Sequel exemptions that were removed and we voted on that a couple of months ago. There's so much more that needs to happen there, uh there was a bill by Senator Hurtado related to the foreign investments, and this is the third year she's introduced it and it dies.
I would love to help, so.
Every single time, it dies, and she partners with the attorney general on this bill and it dies every single time.
Yeah.
Because people think the free market, you should be able to do, so not, you know, it's a hundred and twenty members, we have to get the majority of them to agree and not everyone is on that page yet.
Thank you so much, I could talk to you for hours, but given that, I'll, I'll pass it along.
Yeah, thank you. Uh council member Garcia?
Thank you, well, I want to thank you Senator for coming out, I know you had a very long week of late nights and I think it ended Saturday and you're here on Monday, so we appreciate that. We know a little something about long nights too, but you had them back-to-back. Um, I also wanted to thank you for that information about Medical, those services ending, if you have any um flyers or information that you uh forward to our city, I think we could push that out to our residents knowing that there's a December thirty-first deadline, uh we could share that information as well. Uh I also wanted to thank you for your um not voting for SB seventy-nine, I think that was courageous of you, it did barely pass, and I know every city, I think in Los Angeles County, was desperately calling their representatives, asking them not to vote for it because it allows within half a mile of a MetroLink station and some other stations, um very high density, a hundred and twenty units, seven stories high um buildings. And we have one station, Silmar San Fernando, that's within half a mile and um those communities are probably going to be devastated. I'll also note that um they're already come to us all the time uh due to the high congestion overcrowding, asking us to do something and um, I don't know, I don't know what's going to happen. I'll also note that we had our um annual, annual water quality report that just came out, it was mailed to all residents, and it notes that three of our wells are impacted, the vulnerability associated with detective, detected contaminants, um one of those causes is housing high density. So your vote um was really caring for your community and for our water and our existence as a city, so I want to thank you for that. Um, I did have a request, if there was an ability to do some cleanup legislation for AB four-nine-five, which I understand was written to allow children to easily be placed with caregivers in the event of family separation, not limited to ICE. However, it does allow a word document to be printed out from online and without any parent signature required, no notary, no ID, it gives an adult um custody and education like control, um even if they're not related. So I think that there was good intent, if there's any way to clean that up so that people feel safer about that, I think that would really unify even the opposition to that bill and, and, and carry out its intended purpose. Um, I guess my last question is, we're in a budget crisis, I mean Proposition Thirty-Six didn't even get funded, so I'm wondering, is there any money available for your cities and the city of San Fernando? Um I don't know what the timeline is or, or when you get to make those decisions or if there is any money for our legislators.
Good questions, or I'll, I'll start with the second to last comment you mentioned. So SB, I mean AB four-nine-five is currently a program that exists in the state of California right now and it was just an expansion, and there was a lot of misinformation that came out of that and I, I think what happens is, we don't read the bill, not we, like people, people need to read the actual language of the bill, and it states that a judge in the court has to approve it. It's not just, hey, council member, you are now in charge of my children, I just give you a piece of paper. It has to be approved in the courts. Uh so, and I'd love, and I'll, I'll point that out in the language, I'll make sure Brandon, we send it out. On the sec, on the second point, uh the budget that we passed in uh June, July allocated funding for Prop Thirty-Six. It wasn't at the level that a lot of the people asked for, but I do want to remind everybody that when Prop Thirty-Six was campaigning, they said, we will re require no funding for this. They came to us and said, we don't need, eh, this is not going to cost you a single penny, we do not require more funding. And then they came later, said, we need funding. So we gave funding for that, um I don't know if we're going to give more next year because then, we just passed this budget, this budget's already done. Uh the governor comes up with his next budget uh request in January, and then we review it until June to pass it again. So no extra funding will be given at minimum from now until next July, if there's a digital, uh additional funding to be added to Prop Thirty-Six.
And then uh for the, I'll just say too, for AB four-nine-five, I actually got to speak with the um attorney author, I think she works for public counsel, it was very pleasant conversation and that's why I think the heart of the bill was great. Um and I think there was two aspects, one was the guardianship in a court and the other one was the affidavit, which is just the document. But um, is there any funny, I mean, would it be next July then we can seek, or you'll find out if there's money for cities, um or is that?
Again, the, in the bill for the prop.
Oh, I'm sorry, not Prop Thirty-Six, just like projects, city projects. Um like, you know, one time you helped us with our well.
Oh, you're talking about that, oh, 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 funding for cities, okay, okay, thank you so much, yeah, so my, I've been in for three years, the first year was the only year I was able to bring down funding. Um we haven't been allowed to bring additional funding, the, this is why I spend a little bit more time in Prop Four because that's funding that's going to be avail, available for, for different cities. We just haven't been given the green line to request. I have a list pending and it keeps getting longer and longer for whenever there's ability for us to put funding in. Uh the way this budget, um there were some general geographic area is because they took advantage of the Olympics coming, so they requested some funding for that, and then again, just Prop Four. And then there were a couple of few entities that got a little bit of money, that's because uh some member Jesse Gaber was able to squeeze some in there because he's the budget chair. But that was it, members were not, weren't allowed to. I, I will point though, um if you're ever bored and you want to see me in action in the budget committee, uh just Wednesday night, I did um express my frustration because I did see that one legislator got over a hundred million dollars in their geographic area and I was very upset, to say the least, of how that came to fruition.
Thank you. Council member Lopez?
Well, first of all, thank you so much, um Senator for coming in, you know, and sharing with us all that wonderful things that you've been doing in, in these three years, right, that you took office, and I just want to express my gratitude because your office is the ones that recognize that, important to recognize our community members and being helpful to, I don't know, maybe like five hundred certificates for the three years or maybe le, more or less?
That's Brandon after.
Yeah, I know, and I have a little part in your budget and, you know, your size being so amazing, Cristo, Christie, Michelle, and Diego.
Well, Chrissy used to be with you.
Yes, she's, she's an amazing person, you know, she's so wonderful and um my, my ask for you, is any, any opportunity that you can help that immigrant families right now in the state of California besides the, the, um, the boarding that we're going to have in November, is any outs that you, you can do to protect that immigrant families with funding? Because we tried to bring that, uh, uh Mexico council here in the city of San Fernando, but you know, we always, our budget is a little tight, so is any way, can you support our city?
Um, tough, tough conversation to have with the council that didn't vote to create the city into a sanctuary city, you're asking me how I can help your city, so.
I bought.
I would turn it back to you and say, that would have been a first symbolic good step, uh but on the state level, uh we, we passed a variety of, of, of bills, and I'll try to go as fast as possible, legal representation for minors who are uncom, unaccompanied, uh the healthcare provider entities, information sharing to prevent them from stopping information sharing in um, in the healthcare space, the sending alerts to families in education, if someone's on the school to notify staff, schools, other campuses um ab, about that, the No Secret Police Act to prohibit federal and local law enforcement from covering their faces while conducting operations in the state of California. It's very specific to what kind of faces we're talking, I mean, what kind of mask we're talking about, ski mask. Um, eh, the No Vigilantes Act expands police impersonation laws to address the rise in public fear, a lot of people were pretending to be law enforcement officer, confusing a lot of people with that, so making sure that you have to display identification, identifying you as, a, as a law enforcement officer. Immigration enforcement in schools, it prohibits school au, officials and employees of uh educational agency from allowing immigration enforcement officers to enter a school site. Be, being in a parking lot of a school is allowed, any public space is allowed for any person to be in. A, a lobby of a school is allowed, immigration enforcement officers are allowed to be in the lobby of a school and so, and so forth. Um immigration enforcement protection, it builds on the California Values Act by prohibiting law enforcement agencies from collaborating with providing information to immigration authorities within a one-mile radius of childcare or daycare facility, talking about um our, our families here. Um eliminates sponsored deming requirements from the California Food Assistance Program, what this means is that eligibility for this specific program is based solely on an applicant's actual financial situation, not depending on if you're uh an asylum seeker immigrant or a um, um legal permanent resident. Uh so, there's, and, and there's a lot of things that we did, street vendor business protection, the workplace know your rights, uh for people i- in utilities to get uh, uh lifeline subscribers without having a social security number, so we've done that. I, myself had, here in the city of LA, I mean, in the city of San Fernando, just last weekend, at AME Church, we did uh citizen, 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 citi, citizen workshop where we invited people who wanted to know about the process and how to be a citizen, we brought Salif out here uh to do free consultations with them, I did a, a faith group roundtable with a lot of faith leaders on what we can do to help our communities, I invite anybody to join us in that process. Uh we're going to be doing a lot of things, just a little limited on what we can do, we can, we're looking to help people bring groceries to people's homes because they're not going grocery shopping and they're obs, and, and then they're scared. What can you do with mobile healthcare, can we bring mobile healthcare to people's, uh people's homes so they are getting their healthcare checkup? So council member, it's, it's a, it's a mixture of things.
Yeah, and I just want to be clear and be in the record that I support sanctuary cities, you know, if you remember my record, when I was in Sacramento, I always be in the good side of the, our immigrant families and, you know, I will continue supporting and fighting in that level, and maybe you can be one of our bridge to bring the Salvadorian council to our city.
I would love to do that, absolutely.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you Senator for coming out and uh al, also for having uh Brandon come out to all your meeting, all our meetings and represent you, he represents you well, and uh, and all our grand openings, he's always here and, and very cordial at, at all times. Um, and I do want to say, you know, want to let you know, we do have uh, we have our Discover San Fernando, it's our new uh, we just launched that at, at El Grito, which is our new program, we're going to be having those events here in front of city, city hall, and we plan to have them almost monthly, and it's a way of uh promoting our, our businesses here in the city.
Oh great.
And e, uh provide economic development, so that's one thing that we're doing. And also uh we have Together San Fernando, which is a program that we launched about a month or so ago to uh promote our, to help our immigrant families here that have gone through uh loss of family that due to the, due to the raids, and that's a way of supporting them. And we do meet all of the criteria that sanctuary cities have, and we meet every criteria that they're, that they have for, for that. And uh just given that, you know, I don't have any additional questions, you've answered all my colleagues' questions and, and um, and thank you for voting a no on that prop, prop, uh the bill seventy-nine, so I appreciate that.
Well, Senator San Fernando, thank you so much, I hope I don't, I spend another three years before coming back, there's a lot of moving things, the last thing I'll invite you is to my holiday event, December twelfth, and it's always a fun time, last year was Harry Potter themed, uh this year, stay tuned.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it, have a great evening.
Let's take a photo?
Oh yeah, let's do it.
Next item is informational presentation from the American Red Cross by Miriam L. Andino and Laura Bass.
Hi everyone, uh my name's Miriam Andino, I'm the disaster program manager with the American Red Cross, um I cover the areas of the San Fernando Valley, Santa Clarita, and Antelope Valleys. Um so, today, uh we really just want to reintroduce ourselves to the city. We are a brand new team uh with our executive director Jason Buckley, I'll have him introduce himself um in a few minutes as well, um but we want to restate kind of the services that we provide, um and also the situations in which there are disasters, how we can help the city, um and any questions that you might have, how we can move forward and reestablish that partnership right there. Um so you all saw this year with the wildfires, uh we had a big influx of people interested in volunteering, um but unfortunately, we did see quite a few people lose interest as time went by, um the exciting part is the disaster itself, but we want to make sure that people are prepared beforehand, we're training people, we're having a consistent cadre of volunteers during this, you can say downtime, so when something does happen, we're ready to go. Um our workforce consists of ninety percent volunteers, our workforce consists of ninety percent volunteers, uh so it is crucial for us to make sure we have volunteers in every community um that we represent, uh so that's why we're coming today to the city of San Fernando to make sure that uh residents and the council is aware that uh we are here, we are present, we respond to when there are. We respond to when there are one-off situations like home fires, people are displaced. We always respond to that if we're made aware. We won't self-deploy, but that's why we wanna make sure that people are aware that these services are there 24/7, free of charge. So in addition to that, for your awareness, we have offices located in Sherman Oaks and Palmdale. So just making sure we have coverage of the territory that we support. And one example of what we're connecting with cities to do is to make sure that we have memorandums of understanding, up to date. We believe, we have one with city of San Fernando, but it's something that we wanna follow up with and make sure that we're in agreement and it's up to date. These memorandums do help us when we are experiencing disasters that will have us open shelters, for example, and if there are, you know, needs for disaster supplies, all those types of situations. That's something that the MOUs will help us with. In addition, we wanna make sure that, like I said, we're representing the communities that we serve, that when we go out to help people who have been displaced from a disaster, that they're being greeted by people from their own communities. This includes speaking the languages that they feel comfortable with and really making sure that there's an emphasis on those vulnerable populations, be it they speak another language, they're immigrants, or they're elderly. We wanna make sure all those different pockets are being looked after. Just to share some examples of what we do, we have something called a Disaster Action Team. This is a team comprised of volunteers that will respond 24/7 when a resident has been displaced from their home due to a disaster. Examples being home fires, vehicle into home, you can imagine wildfires that may be just affecting one or two homes. We still respond even it's not those large-scale events you're used to seeing. So recently, we had a response in the area that was firework-related. So it did, I believe this was more so in Pacoima. But the fireworks, you know, affected one home primarily, then affected some neighboring homes. So this is not something that we foresee, residents are displaced, and we were able to go there because a community member recalled the service that we provide and called a number for the clients or residents, as we call them. Another situation is about, I believe, a year ago, there was a mobile home fire, and that was in the city of San Fernando. So we were luckily called in by the fire department. So we wanna, we also make sure our relationships with the fire department are strong. But again, anyone can call that dispatch number that we have, and I can provide that to you as well, as well as with follow-up materials, so you have that on hand. But in these situations, we do also emphasize that there's preparedness that needs to be done beforehand. So one big program that we have in terms of preparedness is something called Sound the Alarm, where we install free smoke alarms at homes, teach home fire preparedness, wildfire preparedness, whatever the major risk there is. And in situations like mobile home parks, that's where we target specifically because these crowded dense populations, fires spread really quickly. Even though it's not like a wildfire-prone area, there's not a lot of brush or trees, mobile home fires catch really quickly and spread really quickly. So we wanna make sure populations are educated, so that they know what to do and how to prevent them in the first place. But the most important thing today, I'd say, is we really wanna make sure that we're making communities aware that we're 90% volunteer-driven. And with this, it sometimes delays our response time if we don't have volunteers in the immediate area. For us, I'd say, being the program manager and knowing all the volunteers that I work with, I'd say most of them right now are condensed around Granada Hills, Northridge. We have, we're lucky to have a few like in Pacoima. But we wanna make sure we're spreading the word, especially I'm focusing on the East Valley. I grew up in the East Valley. So getting Spanish speakers, getting youth involved, letting them know that these opportunities are available. And I'll hand it off to Jason Buckley, so he can introduce himself.
Good evening, Mayor Mendoza and council members. It is a privilege to be here with you tonight, speaking to you on behalf of the American Red Cross, especially during National Preparedness Month. My name is Jason Buckley, and I'm the new Executive Director of the Northern Valleys Chapter of the American Red Cross. And our chapter proudly supports communities across the San Fernando Valley, including right here in the city of San Fernando, by helping individuals and families be more resilient, prepare for, respond to, and recover from emergencies. I'm here tonight not only to introduce myself, but also to pledge a strengthening of our partnership with the city of San Fernando. Together, we can build a more resilient community and also one that's ready for whatever emergency might come next. Thank you for the opportunity tonight, for allowing myself and my colleagues to speak to you a little bit about preparedness and what the services that the American Cross, American Red Cross has to offer, especially for the city of San Fernando and San Fernando Valley at large. It's a pleasure speaking with you, and if you have any questions, we'll definitely help to, we'll answer those for you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Just wanted to thank them for all their hard work and service. Thank you so much, and thank you for coming today, we really appreciate it, and thank you for waiting as well.
Of course, it's our pleasure.
Yeah, I think we just look forward to strengthening that partnership. Fun fact, my second job, I got my first two jobs right around the same month. One was at, the first one was at Fillers, the second was at the American Red Cross, when you guys were in Van Nuys, calling people, asking them to donate blood. So you have a soft spot in my heart.
I'm the new Executive Director of Northern Valleys. However, I, my career in the Red Cross, the first seven years was with Biomed and the Bloodside, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to Councilmember Patty Lopez for the invitation, look forward to working with you.
Thank you, thank you so much, and I would like to hear a few words from Laura because Laura has a special programs, and I know she will maybe speak in Spanish and somebody will translate it, but she's been working, volunteering for Red Cross for a long time, and I know Laura for over 20 years, and for LAUSD, always helping the parents. Thank you so much, Laura, and Miriam.
Buenas tardes, es un placer poder estar aquí y que nos otorguen este tiempo para platicar acerca de lo que la Red Cross hace en colaboración con las ciudades.
Thank you very much for the time you are allowing us to be here today and for us to be able to speak about what Red Cross is doing for the communities.
Yo tengo ocho años como voluntaria en Red Cross. Y comenzamos hace ocho años había coaliciones con algunas ciudades como Silma, Urbana, Pacoima, y una de las coaliciones era San Fernando. Pero bueno, se fueron transformando algunos programas y ya no se llevaron a cabo esas coaliciones. Pero sí quiero hablar acerca de mi experiencia como voluntaria.
So we've been volunteers for eight years. Some of them were coalitions, like in Sumar, cities of Sumar, Van Nuys, Pacoima, and San Fernando. But I know that there's been some transformations or changes, and I want to speak to you a little bit of our experience.
Mi experiencia como voluntaria es que la Cruz Roja me ha enseñado a crecer, ¿verdad? Porque nos dan muchas capacitaciones para poder apoyar a nuestras comunidades.
So the Red Cross has helped me to grow because they do provide a lot of workshops in the community.
Y una de las cosas que estamos necesitando actualmente son voluntarios de habla hispana.
And one of the things that we do have a need for are volunteers who speak Spanish.
Ya que a veces, por ejemplo, los incendios que hubo en Palisades y también acá en Pasadena, necesitaba gente que hablar español para que pudiera contactar a nuestras comunidades de habla hispana.
For example, the fires that we saw take place in Palisades and in Pasadena, we needed people who speak Spanish to be able to communicate with those who only speak Spanish.
Y sí, es una necesidad que tenemos ahora actualmente en la Cruz Roja.
And yes, that is a need that we currently have at Red Cross.
Ya que debido a eso, a veces nuestras comunidades hispanas no pueden hacer el uso de algunos recursos que se dan cuando existen esos desastres.
So due to this, you know, the need that we have, some of our community who speak Spanish cannot benefit of some of these resources available.
Y bueno, pues gracias, gracias por atendernos.
And well, thank you very much, thank you for paying attention to us, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming out. I do have just a few things. Did you bring any materials? Do you have any materials to leave with us? Yes, you can give them to the city clerk, so he can ship.
Unfortunately, I was not able to bring any today.
Oh. You could bring them later, and you can live here in the, with the administrative offices. Okay, that'd be great. And do you still offer the CPR classes? Because I know in the past, we've had those here at City Hall or maybe a Neighborhood Watch meeting, they've offered them in the past. And then also, do we know, Ms. Kit, do we have an MOU with the Red Cross?
I'm not aware of one, but maybe Julia, do you know?
Madam Mayor, if I may, yes, we actually do. It gets renewed, I think, on a biannual basis. I had talked in the past with Ms. Paula Pruner in regards to the MOU, and also the Red Cross has a storage unit at Recreation Park where they stored some supplies in case of an emergency. We had made an appointment in the past to go over the contents of that. Unfortunately, our times haven't combined in order for us to go over that, but I'm sure, I'm sure we can set something up now. And the MOU does include that the use of both community centers in case of emergency.
That would be great, and maybe, I don't know how we would, maybe, there might be some residents here in San Fernando that might like to be volunteers, and we can get a few people that might be interested. I don't know how you do that, but maybe we can accommodate it somehow with our, within the city.
We're definitely willing to help with that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, well, thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Gracias. At this time on the agenda is decorum in order. Mr. City Attorney, can you please read the decorum in order?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the city of San, this is the City Council decorum in order admonition. The City Council, elected by the public, must be free to discuss issues confronting the city in an orderly environment. Members of the public attending City Council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the San Fernando City Council as set forth in the San Fernando procedural manual. Any person making impertinent, derogatory, or slanderous remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the City Council or while attending a City Council meeting, and where such conduct is found to be disruptive of the proceedings, may be removed from the room if the presiding officer so directs the Sergeant of Arms, and such person may be barred from further audience before the City Council. That concludes the admonition, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public statements. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public statements this evening?
Yes, thank you. This is the time and place for public comments on items on the agenda or other city issues. If there's anyone in the council chamber wishing to speak, please fill out the blue form located on the table in the council chamber's entrance and submit it to the city clerk. When your name is announced to speak, please walk up to the podium to address the city council. Please voluntarily state your name and address and speak clearly and directly into the microphone. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Individuals using interpretation services will be given six minutes to ensure non-English speakers have the same opportunity to address the city council. Please note the interpreter will pause the speaker frequently to allow adequate time for translating their comments as closely and accurately as possible. Callers wishing to provide a live public comment, please close your YouTube stream of the City Council meeting, as there is an approximate eight-second delay and will interfere with the live meeting streaming to YouTube. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be identified by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Lastly, please understand that the City Council is unable to respond to questions in order to comply with public meeting requirements. I must refrain from engaging in any dialogue during the public comment period. City staff will have your contact information, and will be able to follow up directly with you regarding your question.
And Madam Mayor and City Council members, the first speaker we have is Linda Suhu, Lupita, followed by Lupita Gonzalez, followed by John David Rivera.
Good afternoon, City Councilors and Mayor. My name is Linda Suhu. I am here in regards to addresses 2026 Lucas Street. There's a tree, a public, a city's tree that is planted on the sidewalk, which is between the two houses where our driveway is. I have been to the city, I've been to the city and addressed the case. So the tree itself, the root had pushed the sidewalk, it's about five, six inches lifted above the, our driveway, above our driveway. So when we tried to park the car, or I drive the car in, it actually scraped the car, and it's a very public safety issue, anyone walk about on that, and was not, it definitely is a hazard to the public. I have been to the city, addressed the issue, I have emailed to Mr. Johnson as well. This has been ongoing for about six months or so. The last response, I, the city went there to temporarily fill the gap, and I have pictured to show you that. So what they did, they did the temporary fill the gap about five, six inches. And that does not address the issue when there's a gap. So my car, here, this is my car, so if you can see, if I drive this car over, I cannot drive it on my driveway because it was scraped. So I have emailed this address to Mr. Johnson, and his response was, it is not the city's responsibility to fix it. And he said, it's a private property owner's responsibility. Well, I'm here to urge the city to, with the city's invention, to repair the sidewalk because it's damaged by the city tree. And per the city's, the Streets Maintenance and Operation Guideline, it is the city's responsibility to make temporary and/or permanent repair to the sidewalk. On top of that, the street and tree maintenance division's task is to address a hazardous situation, which in this case is a hazard to the citizen and to the vehicles as well. And on top of that, I understand per the comprehensive tree prevention policy that was adopted by your city councils here on March 17, 2025, the Resolution Number 8371, that the city is obligated to address any tree that has posed any immediate danger to a human life or injury, or present dangers to the safety of the citizen, which in this case is clearly, is a safety to the citizen and to, is dangerous to anyone who drives the vehicle through. It's not just me, but around it as well. And the neighbors, the neighbors have the same issue as well on the neighbor's driveway, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Okay, sorry.
If you want, you can leave the photos with the city clerk if you wish. Excuse me one moment. Ms. Fritz, it seems that they're unable to hear from the podium, those speaking from the podium.
I'm sorry.
They're unable to hear on YouTube those that are speaking from the podium.
Buenas tardes, buenas tardes a todo el concilio.
Más voz alta, por favor, y en el micrófono.
Buenas tardes a las representantes de la ciudad y buenas tardes a todo el personal de la ciudad.
Good evening, everyone in the council and every representative of the city.
Vengo otra vez representando a 22 comerciantes del área de comercio. Y una semana atrás, me mandaron algunos comerciantes el video que se posteó en las redes sociales respecto a nosotros y respecto a la ciudad.
I'm here representing two merchant, 22 merchants in the community of merchants in San Fernando. One week ago, I was sent the video that went on social media about our merchandise and our people.
Y es respecto, lo publica mi negocio afuera, pueden ver el video.
You can see my business on the video, and it's on regards, in regards to my business.
Y ahora sí me siento intimidada porque este video no significa para nada. Con malas palabras y empezando el video.
I am now intimidated. This video does not represent me. It is speaking bad words as the video begins. For us, this is an offense, having this young lady publicize wrong things about us all throughout the social media.
Y por favor, pida ayuda a la representante de la ciudad y al concilio para apoyar a los negocios. Incluso a Joel Farjardo, la señora Patty López, les encargaron, este, encargarse de nosotros los negocios. No con este tipo de publicación, no con ese tipo de comercial. ¿Piensan que nos van a ayudar?
And this is me requesting help from the council and from people like our council member Joel Farjardo and Patty, Patty López. You guys have been assigned for our protection as merchants. Do you really think this is going to help us?
Incluso lo publica aquí la muchachita diciendo que, que los concejales nos hicieron caso a los comerciantes debido al outdoor market. Y supuestamente el outdoor market perjudicó mucho a los negocios. Ahora imagínense este video cómo va a perjudicar al área de negocio.
And this shows this young lady saying that the council listened to other council, the council members about outdoor markets, saying that now the outdoor market is prejudicing us. And do you really think that seeing this kind of stuff is going to help us?
Otra cosa que el Mall Association no nos ha apoyado nada, nunca ha hecho juntas, nunca ha gastado un dólar para un buen comercial. ¿Qué les cuesta gastar un comercio, un anuncio beneficioso para cada negocio y publicar cada negocio, publicando cosas buenas? Nosotros no somos verduleros, nosotros no somos de tiangues para escuchar esas malas palabras en este video. Y refiriéndose a ustedes, los políticos, que nos hicieron caso a nosotros. Nosotros no somos políticos, nosotros estamos aquí para hacer negocio. Yo soy businesswoman. Yo cada día trabajo para pagar mis billes del negocio.
And I just want to say also, the Mall Association has not helped us. They haven't spent not a single dollar on our commercial, everything. We are requesting commercials and even publicizing an announcement for us. And we are, we are merchants people, we are people who have businesses. I'm a businesswoman. I am not just some vegetable seller. I could not be listening to these words that are harsh towards us. I'm not a politician. I am just a businessperson.
Y pido a la city manager representando de que tome acción con este video porque no se puede estar publicando más.
And I'm asking the city manager for some intervention because this kind of publicizing video should not be posted anymore.
Y pido ayuda para hacer junta con los comerciantes a beneficio, a beneficio de nosotros. No perjudicarlo con este tipo de comerciales en público, en las, en las redes sociales.
And I am asking for a type of meeting for our merchant members, not this kind of commercial or advertisement that has been publicized.
Espero la señora Patty López y el señor Joel Farjardo tomen, tomen, este, en cuenta mi opinión que nos reúnen a los veintidós comerciantes, o el siguiente comercial lo voy a hacer yo afuera de mi negocio.
And I'm asking Joel Farjardo and Patty López to intervene in this case for the twenty-two merchants who are prejudiced out of this. Otherwise, the next commercial is going to come out of me and I will post it.
Pero cojas cosas beneficiosas. Yo tengo clientes de Granada Hills, tengo clientes de Los Ángeles, tengo clientes de Puré Ranch. Imagínense que me vean con este, con este comercial afuera de mi negocio.
And I have customers out of Granada Hills, I have customers in different cities. It's a shame that they would see me in this kind of post, posted video.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is John David Rivera. Sorry about the video. Now is a good time to remind ourselves what it means to be a neighbor. Let's go back to when the city started, and we tried to incorporate the neighborhoods of Silmar, Pacoima, and Mission Hills. It was an effort that ultimately failed, but one that was rooted in a timeless truth, that we are always connected. We all go to Costco, we study at Mission College, our neighbors shop and eat here. The decisions made in this room affect the greater community. That's why we need to place the northern segment of the East San Fernando Valley Light Rail back on the agenda. We must demand a full build scenario before Metro finalizes their plans. We are making a terrible mistake. If the imaginary lines on our map didn't exist, if San Fernando was part of Los Angeles, this wouldn't even be a debate. There would be no secondary study. This line would exist, and it would exist solely to better connect us. It would exist because it makes sense. Recently, you were presented with a third option, ending the light rail at Cesar Chavez Memorial Park. A better-than-nothing compromise from so-called advocates, quick to cut off our friends and family in Silmar. If no action is taken, and when this mistake is finalized in November, it won't just be San Fernando's 24,000 residents who suffer. It'll be Pacoima's 80,000 residents. It'll be Silmar's 80,000 residents. Not to mention hundreds of thousands of people in Santa Clarita, Antelope Valley, Arlita, Panorama City, Van Nuys. All of us less connected because of decisions made right here. We have a duty to our neighbors. Who do you represent if not the people? What have you been studying? There are lessons to be learned from the orange line. This is not ancient history. Homeowner associations in Encino, Sherman Oaks, Valley Village fought the light rail. Politicians, just like you, aligned with them, calling light rail unsafe, noisy, and disruptive to single-family homes. So they backed the busway as a compromise. The Valley has been paying for that mistake ever since. And the irony is clear. The same people that killed the light rail are now asking for a light rail to replace their bus line. It's a multi-generational mistake, and we are moments away from repeating it. I ask you, please, place this back on the agenda for the sake of your legacy, and more importantly, for the sake of our neighbors. Thank you.
The next speaker we have is Paulina Torres, followed by Gladys Diaz and Irene Valencia Wieland.
Good evening, City of San Fernando. My name is Paulina Torres. I'm the Northeast San Fernando Field Deputy for Supervisor Horbath. I wanted to start first by thanking the City Council, thanking everybody I've had the honor to work with so far. Our office has been able to build strong partnership already with San Fernando together, and Supervisor will be here on Friday. We've also been able to partner for the Family Resource Fair happening on October 11th from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Special thank you to the chief for that connection. This will be an expungement. We'll also be hosting Carese in there. They won't be providing in-person consultations because of safety concerns, but they will be doing referrals then and there. This is going to be at Wreck Park. So just thank you so much for the space, for always being collaborative with our office, for always willing to just, you know, work with us for the sake of this community. I also wanted to provide an update on a motion that the supervisor is spearheading. This is in regards to rent relief. If this passes tomorrow, families will be eligible for up to $5,000 in rent relief. This was up on the agenda last week on Tuesday. It didn't go our way, lost two to three. However, it's going to be back up tomorrow. We encourage all of you to call in, to voice your support for the city, for the constituents of LA County. Again, this is up to $5,000 per household. It will also provide this funding for folks that have been impacted by the fires. This includes tenants and landlords. Of course, it's going to be, also going to be impacting and supporting the immigrant community. Those are all the updates I have for the time being, but as always, at your service. Thank you.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Gladys Diaz. Tengo aquí en la ciudad de San Fernando 43 años. En la última casa que vivo tenemos 31 años. Y antes, como en el 80, el 85, cuando había un carro en el driveway que no se movía porque no servía o por equis razón, rápido le mandaban una carta a uno que lo moviera.
Good evening. My name is Gladys Diaz. I am 43. I've been living in San Fernando City for 43 years. In the last home that I've been in, I've been in for 31 years. I remember in the 80s, around the 80, 80 or 85, anytime that there would be a car in the driveway and it was not moved, we would get a letter asking us to move it.
Ahora nunca, no mueven, bueno, donde yo vivo, yo vivo en la 214 Huntington, la persona de al lado, 220, los vecinos, tienen un carro en la calle que tiene, lo mueven cada ocho días para cuando pasa la barredora, y después otra vez al mismo lugar. Ese carro tienen meses que no lo mueven, hasta seis meses que no lo mueven, solo de un lado para otro.
Nowadays, I live in 214 Huntington, and my neighbors in 220, they have a car that they move every eight days when street cleaning is happening. For about months now, they only move it seldomly when it's street cleaning day and it's becoming an issue.
Tienen otro carro que está en la pura orilla de su driveway de ellos. Este carro tiene 15 años desde que ellos llegaron, está ese carro ahí a orilla de la calle. Una camionetita, es una camioneta azul, que no lo mueven desde hace 15 años desde que llegaron. Y digo, si vivimos en una área que es Huntington y la Orange, creo que son las más limpias supuestamente de San Fernando. No vienen a estar esos carros ahí.
They also have another car that they have had, and it's been 15 years that this car has been parked there, ever since they came and moved. It's a blue, a small blue truck, and ever since they arrived, I think about if we live in Huntington, on Huntington in Orange Grove, which is some of the cleanest areas in San Fernando, this shouldn't be happening.
También quisiera que pasar a la policía de la hora de las 10:30 hasta como a la, como tengo cámara, yo veo a las 11:30 en adelante que pasan muchos muchachos en bicicleta, otros caminando, de la 4 a la segunda, y de la segunda a la izquierda para abajo hasta llegar a la gurame. Eso es de todas las noches, que pasan esos muchachos por esa calle con bicicletas, y a veces se paran frente de la casa, si está abierto el driveway se meten. Pues quisiéramos que la policía se pasara en la noche de perdida una vez cada todas las noches para que vieran de que hay más seguridad ahí.
I would also like to request if police could patrol our streets anytime after 10:00 p.m. I have a camera, and I see anytime, from 11:00 p.m. on, there are some kids who run. They go by on fourth and second on their, on their bikes, and some of them go by foot. And every time they're there after 10:00 p.m., sometimes they walk into our driveway. I would just like some police surveillance.
Bueno, es todo lo que les quiero decir. Muchas gracias por su atención a todos.
That is everything I want to share. Thank you for your attention.
Good evening. My name is Irene. I'm Gladys's neighbor across the street on 215 Huntington. And I want to address a few things as well. She's right. I think we came, I want to say 23 or 24 years ago, because we started, when I moved there, you were, there was free parking. You could park anywhere. And, you know, I guess there's not a lot of single-family homes now. So, like, to my ride, I believe he has like five renters. And some of the renters have two or three cars. So then the issue was, so we, you know, the city, we came over here and you guys came up with the parking with the sticker and the visitor parking. I have no idea how they do it now, but it's the same thing. There, they still have more than two vehicles. And for example, my daughter now is a young adult, and she drives. And I have an issue because I can't park the, her car outside because it'll, I'll get a ticket. Because I only have one for my husband and one for myself, and I can't put a visitor parking on hers because I will get a ticket. And, and when it's after 6:00 o'clock, sometimes she goes to work and she doesn't come home until nine, there's no parking. So I asked the person that patrols one day, when am I supposed, where is she supposed to go? Like, three, three blocks down the street, it's after 9:00 o'clock. So she suggested, and she said, "I wouldn't get a ticket." I said, "Are you sure?" She said, "Yes, to park, parallel park in front of my, my driveway." Because that's the best solution, she said. There's, it's like that everywhere. So that's one of the concerns that I have, just vehicles, just a lot of vehicles. And I have, I don't understand how it's more than, like I said, how, how they're able to park and they don't get tickets, because I see the vehicles out there. Anyway, the next one is the bike path, the walking path or bike path. It's been a little while since I've walked through there because I've gone in through the, on First Street. I don't know the, I don't know the name of back there, but the First Street, it has a little cul-de-sac, and you can go in through there, right before Hubbard. I stopped going through there because there's always homeless people or guys that they came out of the bushes, and it's just very unsafe. So I don't, I don't ever see anybody, I, well, I don't, I don't walk through there anymore because I just feel it's very unsafe. And I've seen a lot of, I'm assuming they're homeless because, like the neighbor said, sometimes at 12:00, 1:00, and they'll walk in the middle of the street, in the middle of the street. And a lot of the kids from the down, from the apartment areas, from Second Street, they'll come up and you can hear them, like, they're screaming, and it's 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning. So it would be nice if the police can maybe patrol a little bit more. And another one is that I've seen a lot of homeless at the, I believe it's Pioneer, is it Pioneer? On Hubbard and Fourth Street before Bradley. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if you can make sure that staff is able to respond to her at their convenience?
You got the information, right? Yes.
All right. The next speaker we have is Fernando Diaz.
Good evening, council members. Once again, Fernando Diaz. I'm going to be reiterating a couple of things actually that people were already saying. I just wanted to start with patrolling the bike path. I actually do use it with my son. I do use the bike, the bike path. And I do notice that there's a lot of drug users actually and homeless people. I actually called already three times for different, different instances for that one. One of them, the city police did arrest two of them. I had to call twice, but they actually, you know, did get them. Other than that, other things, you know, homelessness too, I do see a lot. I called twice already because on Hollister Street where I live, same thing. It seemed like an unhinged gentleman that hadn't, you know, that's vagrant, pretty much, let's call it what it is, a vagrant, was throwing stuff into one of my neighbor's houses. Same thing in the San Fernando, San Fernando's church. Another vagrant too was just lying down there on Hollister Street. And Brand too, same thing. They just keep, they actually grabbed the entire San Fernando Sun newspapers and just threw them away. So it's actually an issue. So I really, really hope that, you know, maybe that, you know, you could help us out and we'll put a little bit more pressure on, on patrolling maybe the bike path. Instead of a Tesla, maybe a couple of bikes would, you know, help out a lot. The other thing too, sorry, I've got to go a little fast. Oh, yeah. Please help us again, like the reiterating, no parking. Why? Because we're creating again more apartments, more density, all this stuff. Please stop. Please stop sugar coating on, you know, the verbiage with affordable housing. It's renting, it's not housing because you're just going to be renting, you know. Other than that, the gentleman that came in right now and, you know, and with the videos and all that stuff, we need as a city to inform the citizens and the people that actually live here. Because if not, stuff like that is going to create negative press. So there needs to be a better form of, to communicate with the residents. And the app, it's not very friendly. So there needs to be some way for people to actually communicate, for not only the city to actually disperse proper communication, because if not, people will just go along with, you know, WhatsApp, TikTok and other stuff like that, where they will be getting information that's not up to date, you know, or that they believe is proper, but they don't know what it entails, you know, having a light rail, what it brings with it, you know. Like, I guess, I don't know if he heard, you know, the seven-story building, because you could build that and stuff like that. So if you inform the people here in San Fernando, it would help out a lot. And final thing, when I went to Casa Lopez, I spoke to actually one of the family members that actually is a descendant of the Lopez family. They need help with repairs in the building when I went inside for the tour. So if any of you council members, please, could help us out. Councilman Victoria or Fadl, anybody, I appreciate it. Because yeah, it's a historical monument and, you know, let's make San Fernando, you know, be San Fernando. Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you. What we'll do now, since we've been here for, since 5 o'clock, we'll take a seven-minute break.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to pull items for discussion?
I'm going to pull item number five.
I'm going to pull item number one.
Consent calendar with the removal of items number five and one for discussion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call, please. No, we just discussed it, Mike. Yes.
No.
But we're approving the remaining items. We're approving the remainder of the consent calendar.
Councilmember Lopez?
Councilmember Lopez? Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solerio is absent. Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number one is, I'm sorry. My apologies here. It was on, on the minutes. Let me see. Minutes. On the minutes, on page forty-six, it's just a typo. For, on the, on the general city council comments, on, under my name, Mayor Mendoza, in memory of Rudy F. Herrera, Jr. And so, it's Herrera, not Carrera. H-E-R-R-E-R-A. And Junior could be just J.R. for Junior.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll make that change.
Okay, so I move to approve item number one. So, row call, please.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solerio is absent. Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And item number five?
Thank you. This is for our, an agreement for a water master plan development services. I was just going to ask if we could also have this consultant look into that purple line, which would use recycled water for irrigation purposes only. So if we could give that direction as they're gonna create our plan, I think that would be, you know, the consultant can see if that's feasible and something that could be added. So with that, I'll, move to approve it unless there's any questions or comments.
I just wanna make sure with staff that that's feasible for us to do. Are there Mr. Johnson or Ms. K?
Madam Mayor, member of the council. So the water master plan is just a review of our water facility and infrastructure. So the direction is to include exploring the potential of building a water recycling facility in the future into the water master plan, correct?
I believe it's feasible. I'll go and turn it to Mr. Johnson to clarify that.
Yeah, in a, in a section of the, thank you for that question, Council Mayor. In a section of the water master plan, we will be taking a look at future water and, and, and how do we diversify the source of water? I think in one case, we know we have a little bit of diversity. We have both met, and we also have our own water that's produced. But we will be looking at other sources of water, given the advances of technology in those areas. So we will address that.
Okay, thank you. So with that, whether it's already included or direction to look into that, I'll move to approve item number five.
All right, second.
Row call, please.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solerio is absent. Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next item on the agenda is administrative reports, discussion and consideration to approve second reading and adoption of ordinance number seventeen thirty-six, amending chapter ninety, traffic and vehicles of the San Fernando Municipal Code to implement a residential parking permit program. Ms. Kitt, please provide presentation.
Madam Mayor, I'll turn this presentation to, over to our public works director, but I will be asking if the mayor could, if you, if we could bring item number nine before, since our county representative, Paulina Torres, is here.
Yes, yes. Which item was that?
Item number nine, discussion.
Item number nine, yes.
And consideration.
We're gonna move that one forward, yes. So item number nine is discussion and consideration regarding collaboration with the Mexican consulate to host consulate on wheels program services and approve the cosponsorship and use of the city seal. Ms. Kitt, provide a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for pulling this item forward. I want to share the good news that in discussion with the representative from County Lindsay Horvath's office this evening, the county is interested in forming a partnership with the city and the Mexican consulate office to host the mobile consulate on wheel program at the San Fernando Aquatic Center for the month of October. And with that opportunity, Paulina will be working with the team to waive the fee. We will provide update today from our rec director that the fee to use the facility would be fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand something. So if we, if now the request this evening would be approval from the council to do a three-way partnership with the County of Los Angeles, City of San Fernando, and the Mexican consulate office to host a mobile consulate office in the month of October, from October seven to the first of November, to provide service to the community and to use of the city seal as, along with the county seal on our promotion. Thank you.
I'd like to move to approve that item.
Maybe before the council move, I would like to invite the representative, Paulina Torres, to come and confirm the partnership.
Thank you, Kanika, and thank you, council as well, again, for your continuous efforts and support for the immigrant community. This kind of event is, today I learned that it's gonna be throughout the whole month. So it's gonna be for not just a day. It's gonna be from Tuesday to Saturday, from eight-thirty to three-thirty. I was talking to Julio about how great it is that it's open also on a Saturday. A lot of our community works, you know, and sometimes even on Saturday they work, but maybe they could make a little gap and take one Saturday off. I look forward to getting that information and writing that memo, and just thank you so much for the work that you're doing to see if we can, how we can partner on this effort moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I forgot to mention that this partnership would also be part of San Fernando to get our partnership with the county.
Great. Thank you. So we, do we vote on this to move forward?
Yes.
Yes, so we already have a second. Row call, please.
Can you confirm who the second there was? Councilmember Garcia, thank you.
Wait, I just wanted to also say thank you so much to the, our LA County Supervisor, Lindsay Horvath. That's a really huge contribution. We're very excited to partner with her office, and it's perfect. It's a government building, so I think it will work really well for the people who are coming. It'll be a professional location, plenty of parking, and a great setup. The representative from the council was excited and hopeful that that would be the location on Saturday. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solerio is absent. Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Can I say something?
Yes. I just wanna say thank you to Julio Salcedo and his staff and to be persistent with our Mexican council and facilitate a conversation together with our amazing city manager, Kanika. We took a tour for different locations, and maybe this is just the beginning to bring more resource to our community, not just the Mexican council, but El Salvador or Guatemala, they're in the line, in the list, maybe for the next year, you know, do some kind of a collaboration. Thank you.
So we're on item, next item is number seven, discussion and consideration to approve a second reading and adoption of ordinance number seventeen thirty-six, amending chapter ninety, traffic and vehicles of the San Fernando Municipal Code to implement a residential parking permit program. Ms. Kitt?
Madam Mayor, I'll turn the presentation, presentation to our public works director, Wendell Johnson.
Did we wanna see the presentation again, or did we wanna just discuss this and allow for public comment?
Wendell, since this is a second reading, may I just provide counsel, be frank, background of what was discussed at the last meeting, and if there's any changes to this? Thank you.
Yes, yes. Just to recap this particular item, this is the second time that we've introduced amendments to chapter ninety of the, of the San Fernando Municipal Code. If you recall, we, we have two goals now. Previously, we had three goals. We eliminated one goal to return at a later date, and that was to address oversized vehicles, or recreation vehicles parked in, in people's driveways and also on, on the street. So, so that section was removed from this particular amendment, and so we only have two goals that remain here, is one is to revitalize the residential parking permit program. It's reestablish standards and flexibility to address parking demands in certain areas. Okay, that's the first goal. And the second goal is more of a technology catch-up, meaning that our goal number two is to change how we receive parking payments. The code itself was written in nineteen fifty-seven. There was no such thing as an ATM card back then. There were very few credit cards, and our meters have come into, well into the twenty-first century here, and you're able to pay using your Visa card or using your ATM. However, technically, we don't have a way of actually collecting it, because it just addresses coins. So this allows us to do this administrative action, just to clean up some areas of, of the code. And without any further ado, I'll take any questions that you or the public may have, Madam Mayor and council members.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to make any comments or have any questions?
Just one brief comment. I forgot what the vote on this was our last meeting, if it was four-oh or five-oh. But, do you recall?
Yes, the vote was four-two, for yes and one abstaining.
Oh, okay, got it. Yeah, customarily, we just have this on the consent calendar if it's unanimous, but I was wondering why this was brought back as a, as an administrative report as opposed to consent. So that makes sense if there was an abstention. Okay, so that being said, if we are opening the floor to motions, I will move to approve the item.
I have a second.
Row call, please.
Councilmember Lopez?
I stand in on this item.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solerio is absent. Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration to designate a voting delegate and alternate for the twenty-twenty-five League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo for the General Assembly Meeting. Ms. Kitt, please provide presentation.
For this presentation, I'll turn it to our city clerk, Julia Frit. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. Tonight, staff is requesting that the city council take action to designate a voting delegate and up to two alternate voting delegates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo, taking place October eighth through the tenth, two thousand twenty-five, in Long Beach. The league requires each member city to formally designate its voting delegate and any alternates by city council action in order to participate as a voting member in the General Assembly meeting where policy resolutions are considered. The action before you tonight would also authorize a city clerk to submit the required voting delegate and alternate submission form to the league. This item has no budget impact to appoint a voting delegate and alternate voting delegate. Staff recommends that the city council appoint a voting delegate and up to two alternates, if, if city council wishes, to ensure the city's representation and participation in league policy decisions. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
So, the only, is anyone else going to League of Cities, or am I the only one? No? So...
I would love to go. I just don't have plans to go, but if you're the only one...
The only one.
Yeah, feel free to do it.
But Councilmember Fajardo, I don't, if you want to, you can be an alternate. Do you want?
And I will be an alternate in the event that I go, but as of right now, I don't have plans to go. But it is a very unceremonious event. People are usually eating at the time it takes place, and you're in a huge hall with hundreds, or maybe, I don't know, a couple hundred other cities, a hundred or something other cities, and they ask who's in favor of this issue, and then who's in favor of that one, and the one that sounds mostly louder is the one that they say passes. So it's not like it is this very formal process, although we had a council, I almost say anger, a little brawl back in twenty-fourteen, because someone wanted to be, two different people wanted to be part of this very nondescript process, but I would be honored for the mayor to do it, and I will be an alternate in the event that I am able to make it.
Okay, so is there a motion?
So moved, based on that statement.
I'll second.
Row call, please.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solerio is absent. Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Another brawl, a sharp verbal disagreement. That is a better way to phrase it, sharp verbal disagreement. So we're gonna go with that.
Next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration requesting an overview and description of the city graffiti program. Ms. Kitt, presentation, please. Oh, no, this was placed on the agenda by Councilmember Lopez. Please provide your presentation. I'm sorry.
Well, it's, I don't have any presentation on this issue, but I believe for the last past few months, we was discussing to funding more on this program, and I believe in the last, in the last meeting, we have, we agreed to add more funding on the graffiti. Correct me if I'm correct or not on this issue, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, member of the council. So at our last council meeting, we did, the council did approve additional funding to go into our neighborhood cleanup program to help address graffiti in a residential community, and also add funding to our small business assisted program to focus on graffiti in the commercial area. So commercials being addressed that way. I also want to share with council that their graffiti policy and procedure was recently approved by the council this year in February eighteen. If you would like, we can definitely send that agenda, that staff report and our policy that include procedures and process in there for the council to look at, if you would like to see that. And, and our team, public works and our community development team are working together to address graffiti. I also want to say thank you to our community member out there, Miguel Montanaz, for helping, helping report the graffiti through the apps. It's really helpful, because I help keep track of the graffiti that we have in the community and how our team is addressing them. Thank you.
Any other council comments or questions?
I would just love for us to be as proactive as we can with the graffiti. I know that it has increased, and I'm not sure if it's due to an increase of crime in the county in general, or if it's just statewide problems, but I know that the, the city does have an appetite to see it addressed. Some businesses are also being very adversely impacted by this. I know that there's that auto shop, I think it's called Urbanos, but I could be wrong, on Hubbard and, and First, and it just seems like it's graffitied every other week. And I don't know what more they can do, so if we have some solutions for them other than just the painting, because the painting is actually incumbent upon them. I know that we do it sometimes, but if we have any other solutions, that would be helpful, because some areas, it doesn't seem that we've been able to mitigate it as quickly as I'd hope.
I have a follow-up question on that. So I've heard, I've heard that reference to a kind of graffiti resistance coating. Is that something that's like a paint, that you paint on the building? And if so, is that something we can use that pot of money that we invested toward the neighborhood cleanup to purchase that and, and maybe help them that way? If they can just rinse it off their building, if we coat it for them? I don't know if it's that simple, or if it's more expensive.
So, Madam Mayor, I can address that question. So, yeah, the graffiti coating is a clear coating that could be applied to the existing buildings. So the idea, if it's on a residential component, first, we have to have to paint the wall, the pink color of the wall first, and then we can apply the clear graffiti coating. So the idea for the neighborhood cleanup program is that we would work in the residential neighborhood to work with property owners that have the wall on the corner, that has high graffiti, and get them to agree to let us paint the wall during the neighborhood cleanup with a clear graffiti coating. But they would have to paint the wall themselves, so that, that way, we don't have to purchase all the paint color in the city. For the commercial component, since, but, but, I'm painting the wall... For the commercial component, since painting the wall or buying coating and give it to is considered a public service, for our CDBG grant, we cannot provide that, we, our max out is already at the twenty-six thousand, that's already included for the neighborhood cleanup. For the commercial program, what we do, we encourage the business to apply for it, so it's high graffiti. We encourage them to apply for anti-graffiti coating. And what we'll do, we give them funding to buy the paint and apply to the building themselves.
Maybe they'd be interested in a camera and maybe that might be the solution of catching who's doing the, you know, doing the graffiti, you know?
Madam Mayor, I also like to add that our small business assistance program also include exterior cameras. So there are businesses that apply to do graffiti coating plus exterior camera for, for future prevention. Now, we are still in the process of implementing it, and we see to hope that a lot of the business will be able to complete those projects fairly soon, so we can share that with council.
Yeah, so someone can specifically go to that business and share the information once we're ready and suggest they apply for that program if they, if they wish to. Okay, so where, are we done with this item, Councilmember Lopez?
Yes, maybe in a few more months, we could come back again and, and have an update on this.
I love a quarterly update on graffiti at B A P, man. Even if it's just, you know, in the closing comments from staff, I think even something minimal like that would be helpful. We received X number of reports, got Y number of responses done within a certain amount of time.
Or you put it in your, I don't know, it's something that would go in your report.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, if I would like, we would like to include that in our item number three that was on consent, our list of projects. So we could include that in our report as projects of, and then provide the numbers there. And we can also, because we can do that with our My San Fernando app, and that's why I said thank you to Miguel Montanaz for reporting it, because once you report it, we can take it from the app easier, so we can help track the number of graffiti incidents. And it also helps identify hotspot and peak time as well. So, thank you.
Do any, do you report anything on the, on the app? Do graffiti on the app?
Do I report anything on the app? I personally don't. I'm more of a believer of calls and emails. And so I personally do not have much of a presence on the app.
I think it's easier for staff if, if we use the app, because then it's already accounted for and that's what they use to, to do their work, right? If we as council members, I don't know if, our other council members, Councilmember Lopez, do you use the app?
I, I, yeah, I, I report several times and, yeah. Yeah, from the app, believe it or not, believe it or not, slowly, but I getting in there. I know I might lose like all, but you know, I try my best to report in the app. But the same like, Councilmember Fajardo, I also believe that some of our residents and our seniors are not, not at the speed with the technology and the calls and the emails, that can be faster for them. So I, I believe we can work in both sides, so you know, different types of reporting.
They have that option, but I think as council members, you know, we have, we can do it very easily. I mean, I use it all the time. Councilmember Garcia, do you use the app?
Thank you for asking me, Madam Mayor. I do not. It's difficult for me. My husband has it and I'll forward it to him. And I, personally, I feel like it's a bit trying to fit like a square peg in a round hole. Like, I don't see people using it, but we're trying to force it, but it's, we're, we're introducing it versus seeing what the city already is accustomed to, like a portal, like a web portal, I think people would use. And then also, it's, the feedback I get from my own household and others is that like, you can't tell if anything was done. And if you go outside and look, it looks like it wasn't addressed. And so I think that's discouraging.
Well, I could probably say that I do use the app on a regular basis. If I'm taking a walk, or I go to pick up my granddaughters, or I'm going shopping, whatever I do, I use the app on a regular basis. And it's very easy when you're gonna report any graffiti. You take the picture while you're there, you go into the app, you open, and you indicate that you wanna put in a request. And then the search, all you put in is graffiti in the search. And it tells you is it public or private property? And then you select whatever it is. And then you take the picture, it takes you go to the camera, take the picture, and in the picture, it tells you, it provides the address, you don't even have to put in the address. And then it just, and you know, so it does that. And sometimes I will take two pictures, because I'll take the picture of the graffiti and then just so they will know like the location of where it is in a particular building, especially if it's a long building that's a whole block, maybe like Santa Rosa School, and there happens to be graffiti there. So I'll take a picture of a wall or something that's across the street that identifies that particular area or that particular window or whatever it is of the school or the, or the sidewalk, then they will have the idea where in that area I'm talking about. So anyway, I'll do two pictures. And it helps identify the location easier for them, because it's a whole block. So, and then you just submit it. And then you get an email with the, with the number. And then when, once they've taken care of it, they know, you'll get an email telling you what number it is. And if they have any questions, they'll ask you the question if they have any questions about the location or something. And once it's completed, they will notify you that it's completed. Then you can go in if you wanna track it and to see if it's been done or not. It's very simple.
But the thing is that people don't want to have to download an app. Actually, I think what would make it a lot easier is if we had, and I mentioned this before, if we have a phone, especially for graffiti, if we have a phone number where they can just text a picture or two, and we can buy a line for like twenty dollars a month where they can text and send messages to. For me, I prefer not to have tons of apps on my phone. I feel like you're always being pushed into downloading an app, even when you're in Pasadena. For some districts, they like force you to download an app to park there, to pay. It's ridiculous. At least I was at Burbank on Sunday, and they give you the option for the app, but they also give you the option to pay by text for the parking. I'm like, thank you, this is way easier to do. So there's so much, like there's so many issues concerning privacy, I feel, that convincing people to download another app is not what they wanna do. By the way, I even just signed up for like a frequent flyer airline thing, and when it asked me to go to the next page, it looked like my screen was locked with the thumbprint. So I put my thumbprint on there, but it was actually taking a picture of my thumbprint for faster logging in. I'm like, that's a really deceptive little page that they have on the app. So this is another, I need to call them to delete it. But this is another reason why people just don't wanna give out personal information, so.
I just wanna say we applaud you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much.
And I also have like, well, just thinking what the community might say, storage issues on their phone?
Well, I, I have a lot of gigs.
Madam Mayor.
I would also like to share, I would also like to share, thank you for using the app because it definitely helped us generate the numbers that we need at the end of the year when we do our budget requests as well. I also like to share that when the council member or any resident does report to us on email or phone, we do log it into the app, so that way we can track it. The suggestion of looking, see if there's a text line, we'll definitely look into that and see if that's a possibility. Maybe it will make it easier if there's a line you could just text it to, just like how we could text nine-one-one now.
There's a whole bunch of apps now for business purposes. I consider, you know, to a degree, this would be like a business purpose, where they should be able to text us, and we can include in our water bill, see graffiti, text us, you know, with the picture, yeah.
We provide options, I don't think, you know, it's possible.
Sorry.
I believe, last time, Councilmember Garcia mentioned that if it was possible to do like a WhatsApp, a WhatsApp.
A lot of people use WhatsApp.
They're connected with, to their residents.
Yeah, some people use WhatsApp.
That was, that was actually a, also a suggestion from Naleo, where they said, how do you meet the community where they are? And so we can look into what our community uses most and meet them there.
The Latino community uses the WhatsApp.
I've never seen any, I use WhatsApp all the time, especially for like my friends in like Latin America, South America. But I've, and all the businesses use it there. I've never seen a business here, I'm sure it exists, I've never seen a business here that uses and advertises WhatsApp for business, so. But WhatsApp or just a general texting number like line two.
It might be good to look at some other options as well. But, yeah, they do have the, you can call in your request or email them or use the app. But may I add, I also report potholes and lifted sidewalk and holes in the sidewalk as well. And I, I know, Mr. Johnson, you wanted to say something?
Really quick before, Mr. Johnson, I also want to share that when it's reported in our app for graffiti, it does get distributed to both our Public Works, our Community Development, and also our Police Department to respond immediately.
Yes, because they are checking out the graffiti to see what, if it's gang-related or, and they're studying it, create a file for the, the writing and what it says. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, as you have adapted easily to the app.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, when it comes on the back end of the app, we haven't exactly completely adapted. And I think what has gotta improve is actually sending out that email that the work has been completed. And I think that's the, the issues that some people may be having when we do close out the work order. We, you know, my main graffiti guy during the week is very eager. He is very passionate about his work. And so I know that more than likely, like, you know, even when he's cruising along, he's, that's, it's a non-reported, you know, graffiti incident. He gets out there, he takes a picture of it, and he does upload it into GoGov or to the city's app. And so what we've gotta do is we've just gotta audit and fine-tune it a little bit and, and see if we can do a better job on reporting out. There was about a fifty percent increase in graffiti over the month of August, over the month of July to August. And it may be partially fueled by, you know, kids are out, the hot summer night, let's get out of the heat of the house and stuff like that. And so, but, but this is allowing us to, you know, fine-tune and to look at, you know, where resources need to be going, going to, in order to keep San Fernando beautiful.
Yes. And I did do a report on Saturday morning around when we were going to Las Palmas for the finance workshops. Yeah, and I did that at, I think it was nine AM, and within an hour or half an hour, it was already gone. So thank you, you know, to you and the staff. So I guess we're, we're done with this item? Yes, thank you. All right. So our next item is discussion and consideration regarding crosswalk safety near San Fernando Middle School and the bike path. This item was placed on the agenda by Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just read what I wrote here. "We have heard from numerous members of the community with safety concerns regarding Brand Boulevard in front of San Fernando Middle School. It is unclear whether the city or LAUSD is working toward making this area safer. However, this should be a coordinated effort between the city and the district. I would ask to make this a priority for our city because it is a priority for our community. Additionally, the crosswalk on Glen Oaks Boulevard leaving the bike path between Arroyo and Griswold is extremely dark at night and unsafe." And I'll mention two other factors that led me to bring this up. One is that we received, I think we all received an email from the principal of San Fernando Middle School, and I did reply separately so that I would not have any Brown Act issues. So I took you guys all off, so you're not aware of what that email was. But essentially, I have to say, I'm a little bit embarrassed because I had been with the understanding that the city was trying to work on it, and it was LAUSD that was not getting back to us. That's the only reason I mentioned it to Superintendent Carvalho. But then I learned that might not be the case, that the LAUSD has sent us a couple letters. So with that new understanding, you know, I wanna apologize if I asked questions that maybe would, should have been directed more toward us versus the district. But what can we do? I mean, what I know is that there was almost another accident, even after our meeting with the superintendent, and grave concerns about that area. So I know that any type of creation of a new crosswalk system, whether it's lighted, whether it's anything, is, is going to be extensive and costly. So what can we do to maybe partner with the district to get that done? Or, and, and maybe to find out what is the best thing to be done? I think there's different ideas of a bigger loading area of lighted crosswalks, but what would be the best thing? So I would like to look, have, you know, look into that to see what would be the best thing. In regards to the bike path, I was driving down Glen Oaks and like three young men, probably teenagers, they just like came out of the bike path onto Glen Oaks. And I was like, oh my gosh, that was so dangerous. But then I thought, it's not really their fault, it's the bike path that just crosses the middle, the busiest street. And it was very dark. So again, I don't know if it's lighting, I don't know if it's lighted crosswalk. That we could look into what might be an appropriate solution for that area to make it safe as well, especially if, you know, we're gonna go into this priority of our bike path. Again, this goes back to us wanting to maintain and care for the bike path we already have. Is this an opportunity for us to ask Metro to give us some funding to help this? That's my questions.
Madam Mayor, if I can share an update on that. So from the last time that LAUSD was here, staff had a meeting with the LAUSD team, with their team, and we have Martha Alves online as well to answer the question, if there's any question for council. But I want to share that we did receive two letters from LAUSD. One is back in April and one that's recently. The one in April requested the city to take a look at prohibiting parking on Third Street as well as expanding the loading and unloading area on Brand, I believe. And so our team have agreed to look at that. We'll have our city engineer go out and take a look, do an assessment on it to make sure that what changes we're gonna do would not impact the residential community to address both the safety for the student and the parents as well as parking for our residential community around there. The second letter is regarding the lighted crosswalk, and we have been in communication with them. So the goal here is to work with LAUSD to seek grant funding, to do an assessment of what type of light crosswalk would be appropriate in that location, what type of traffic control would be appropriate so that it doesn't impact traffic flow on Brand. That's the update I wanna share. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Well, I certainly wouldn't wanna ask Metro for assistance if this is in connection with the, the East San Fernando Valley Transit Corridor project, because I don't want us to ask for more from that goodie bags if I don't support that. But if there are other ways for us to address this within our means as a city, then I certainly would like us to do what we can.
One method I believe we were looking into, window, if you wanna jump in on it, is upstate route to school. Typically, there is grant funding available for that every year. I believe we already receive it, and we are working on some improvement throughout the city. So I don't know if we can include for this year, or, but something that we can definitely look to include for next year.
Is, and I know that would apply to Brand Boulevard, would that apply to Glen Oaks? I mean, it's kind of by Chavez, is it close enough to loop it into that type of grant funding?
Oh, regarding the bike path at Glen Oaks, we'll take a look at it and see what measure we can look into and what grant funding opportunity we can explore, if this is something that Metro might be willing to do since it's improving the bikeway connection. So we'll look, take a look at that.
If they're gonna give us the money, but irrespective of our position on the, on the rail, I'm okay with that. But I don't want it to be an advocacy for the rail. Yeah, I'm okay if they wanna give us money.
But one of the rail projects we did support, this council did, but not the light rail. But my other question is, so I think, I'm hoping for a direction that we can look into it, and then the, and then the city can come back to us with options and we can go from there. The other thing that was mentioned, the principal said that when we put one of our patrol cars by San Fernando Middle School, everyone was on better behavior, but that, you know, we have very few, and I know LAUSD has LA school police. So maybe we can begin talks to see what they can contribute, and if they do, you know, I don't know, can they put one of their patrol cars there? So just to begin those discussions. Can they put one of their patrol cars there? So just to begin those discussions.
Madam Mayor, just to, just to address the point that Councilmember Garcia has made, we have reached out numerous times, I personally have reached out numerous times to LA School Police with respect to getting supplemental support for traffic enforcement. And as a matter of fact, I was out at the San Fernando Middle School today personally monitoring traffic. And without getting into too many details, yes, when people see the police, obviously, they tend to be more cognizant of the rules of the road. And yes, we do have challenges with different parts of the community wanting to see more police. And the school community is one of those communities that wants us to be present in and around the schools. And it's not just San Fernando Middle School. It's San Fernando Elementary. It's Old Melvany. It's Cesar Chavez. So, so we do our best with the resources we have to, to provide patrols in the neighborhoods as well as the schools, as well as the businesses, bike path and other areas. And one of the, again, I understand that LA School Police is limited as to what it can do. But many times, it's, it's challenging for the San Fernando Police Department to address these traffic concerns without really the support or a coordinated effort with LA School Police. So whatever LAUSD could do to, to provide resources or additional or supplemental resources would be great. And I see Ms. Alvarez is, is, is joining us. So she could probably speak to the resources available by LAUSD School Police. But whatever they could provide, we could definitely use it.
That's, Ms. Alvarez, would you like to add anything to the conversation?
Hi, good evening, Mayor Mendosa and councilmembers. Thank you for the, thank you for the flexibility to allow me to address you this evening via Zoom as opposed to being there in person. I apologize, my kids are in the background, so if you hear any noise, sorry for that.
No worries.
Since the last time that we saw you, when Lieutenant Carvalho and Boarder Gonas came to the city council on August 18th, and I will echo what was already been shared by the city manager. We have had at least two conversations with the city staff and plan to meet again next week. We have our office at Environmental Health and Safety. We do have also engineers in-house who provides that preliminary support to the schools in being able to assess any traffic-related concerns. It is our OHS, Office of Environmental Health and Safety. Their staff are the ones who help work with the cities directly with letters formally on behalf of the schools addressing the concerns around traffic. So, so we have some preliminary information. I know there's been a commitment between our offices and the city manager, Public Works and Regent Parks, to meet again, talk about those needs. And as has already been mentioned, explore if we can pursue grant funding to support any of those traffic improvements. It is our humble request for consideration, addressing any more immediate, low-cost efforts, whether it be painting a gang across walk, whether it be posting signage. As has already been mentioned by, by Kanika, there's been a request previously regarding perhaps some parking not being available during the school hours. So that that way there's not as much traffic congestion as people are dropping off their kids. We also offer through LAUSD, our office in Environmental Health and Safety, some of our schools have a traffic ballet program where we have parent volunteers and school staff who can support in the morning during drop-off just to mitigate any traffic congestion. So by all means, we look forward to continuing being part of the conversation of what we can do together to address these traffic-related concerns. Just last week, Superintendent Carvalho, we convened a meeting that Will, from your city manager's office, attended along with other city managers from across the region, talking about the district's interest and commitment to continuing to find ways to, to work together across municipalities. I want to acknowledge Chief Valdez and your team. The parent academies will begin again next week as a middle school with great support from your school police, from your police department. And looking forward to finding other ways for us to continue the efforts. And I am aware that tomorrow we'll have several council members and Mayor Mendosa attending at one of our greening, ribbon-cutting efforts at Old Melvany Elementary School. So there's been some progress in continuing those efforts. And by all means, you have our commitment to continue to be a strong partner. And I will personally follow up with our school police department with Chief Pizarro Wicks to once again make the reintroduction to Chief Valdez to ensure there can be a follow-up conversation around what might be possible ways to coordinate or communicate around those needs in the surrounding communities. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. But again, we, we take seriously our commitment to strengthening our engagement with the city that you all represent along with our constituents and communities.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alvarez. And you have our commitment as well to continue the conversations and keep an open mind as, on anything that comes up as well. And we're really concerned about the children's safety and want to make sure that, you know, everything goes smoothly in every way. And we'll, you know, we'll be meeting here as well to, to make sure that, that we, we're all in communication and on the, on the right. We have, you know, we all getting, we're all getting the, the information, right? And keep us all informed because I think everyone's having like little meetings, but then we're not, we're not aware. So well, maybe just regular little updates to, to council as well, right? So.
So if I may, well first I just want to say thank you to Ms. Alvarez. I think she is incredibly responsive and very knowledgeable, great with connecting us. So she's on it. I know that. So I would just ask for, there's consensus to provide direction for our city staff to continue to coordinate with LAUSD concerning the safety initiatives and to gather information regarding safety options for both the bike trail exiting onto Glen Oaks and in front of San Fernando Middle School. I think if we put this on our, our number three item of our council priorities with the updates, that way if somebody wants to address it or if the city has updates, it can be pulled. And, you know, just have them explore what options. I would want to look at the things that the city can do more quickly, that we can look into those on our own initiative quickly.
And I do want to know if Ms. Gonas wants to have a meeting with us. So I know she had mentioned a meeting. I just want to confirm that. If you, Ms. Alvarez, if you could ask her if she wants to have a meeting or if she's fine with the meetings that the, you know, staff is currently having. I'm fine with that because I know we had discussed, she and I had discussed a meeting. So, you know, just follow up with Kanika and we'll go from there. Okay? And that's, I think that's it. Thank you for joining us. Okay, so now. Next item on the agenda is staff communications, including commission updates. Ms. Kit?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chris or Julie, can you put up the staff presentation? Here's our staff communication for this evening. Just want to provide a quick update for San Fernando together that, as Polly mentioned, our press conference will be this Friday at 9:00 AM here in the city council chamber. We'll be having, hosting another food distribution on September 26th at Rec Park. Want to share the good news that Las Palmas roof has been replaced. So now they're moving forward to fixing the AC for Las Palmas. I just sent out an email to the council today too, to share with you our joint effort for homeless cleanup under the San Fernando Bridge above the Coina Wash and share some photos of what City of L.A. and our team have found out there. And that's a great effort too, for us to address homelessness and keeping our city clean and safe. Our, thank you to the entire staff, Julio and our BRCRC team for putting our successful First Time Financial Summit in our Grito this past Saturday. On one day, it was a big day on Saturday to host both events. And want to share that the chief and Julio hosted the first parent academy at Santa Rosa Church on September 11th. And they'll be doing another one on September 18th. And also want to invite the community to come out and attend our first water and sewer public engagement meeting that will be on September 17th at Las Palmas Park. And also want to let the council know that next week, our executive team will be at our executive retreat. So we'll be out for the week, but we'll still be available through phone and email. But we have a very great management team and staff that will keep the city running. And with that, I want to say a special thank you to all of our city staff, Unclear Public Works and PD for making El Grito a reality on Saturday. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is General City Council Board Member Comments and Liaison Updates. Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes. So as we spoke about earlier, there will be an election this November. I believe for the past couple of cycles, if we've had an election, we have not had a city council meeting that Monday before the election so people can participate in the democratic process. I recommend that we continue with that tradition and hopefully have our first November meeting on the week after the election. And again, that's, I know a council decision, just wanted to put that out there so staff can have a feeler to see if the city would accommodate that. The second thing is that it's interesting that, you know, we had discussion of the rail project again today. Although I disagree with the gentleman who came, I would support actually having it back for discussion again just because I would hope that my colleagues would reconsider their support for the project. I forgot what the metro representative said in terms of the downtime when the cross rails go down. I think he said something short like 30 seconds, but I don't want to misquote him. I've been there sometimes and it takes over two minutes. And if you figure that right now with four, sorry, with the light, sorry, with the metro link going four times an hour, it's potentially eight minutes. If it's going eight times an hour, it's 16 minutes. It's almost like a quarter of the time that it would not be in use during the day. So it is something that I hope that the city council could reconsider. And I also don't feel that we had as an elaborate discussion with this project, whether it's the second metro link line or whether it is the light rail. But we didn't have the same robust discussion that we had with high-speed rail in terms of talking about how it might affect our response times on emergency calls and how it might impact the businesses. So again, if the decision is set, I, I, you know, respect the process. But I would also be very open to having that discussion again with more detail. I also want to thank staff for the wonderful, for the wonderful El Grito event. It was very nicely done. Wonderful booths, wonderful entertainment, and it was enjoyed by the community. One recommendation that I have that we had, that we discussed a couple of years ago was having those children's seats out. We bought two sets of them. I'm not the only one who goes with children. I see that there are other people there. And I just noticed that some of them have a little difficulty sometimes with just feeding the kids and they're putting them on a bench, but there's no table or they're sitting on their lap. And it's really hard sometimes if they don't have a place to sit that is designed for them. And so given that we have a couple of those that we budgeted for a few years back, I'd love to see them at events. And who knows, maybe on the next two events, no one uses them, but the next three or four people do use them. It would be great to have them there with the public seating so that they can be used as needed. I also noticed, I think maybe a month back, that the mall at the, sorry, the sign at the mall, I think on San Fernando Road and San Fernando Mission Boulevard, it looks like it was hit by a car or some type of vehicle. And I don't know if there are any plans to repair it. It looks like it's been piecemeal together. I did want to agendize that, but I had a number of items to agendize and I woke up realizing that it was Thursday instead of Wednesday. So I didn't get that on there. I'll speak with Ms. Kit about it. I don't know if this is something, something that they would handle administratively or if it's something that needs to be brought back before the council. But I just wanted to put that out there. On the next agenda, I will have a handful of items on there. We don't have to discuss all of them. I don't mind if they just get pushed on to the next meeting. I just don't want to have the process where I'm saying I'm going to agendize it and then I keep missing a day. But the items that I want to bring forward are the procedural manual so we can figure out the order that we vote in, a discussion on Cindy's Park and starting the process for the community outreach. I think for three years, we've been saying we would have those meetings. It hasn't happened. And I'd love for us to explore ways to make it a monarch butterfly conservation. And then updates on the trees and the empty planters and the sidewalks. And then last two things, again, even with all these things, these great projects that we're doing, I would still love to get regular updates from staff on the, the work on the well two. I know that, or is it well two or is it well three? Well, two. You know, $7 million is quite a large sum and I want to make sure that we capture all of it within the time that's set before us. And then lastly, I wanted to close the, or close, in my comments with the discussion of Charlie Kirk. I think that last year was a, was a very sad moment for the nation. And even if we agree or very strongly disagree with Mr. Kirk's political views, we can't tolerate violence as a response to anyone's views. We have come to the point in society where it feels that there is a slightly higher tolerance for violence in the public sphere. And I hope that we can do anything that's within our powers, within our power to move away from that. We need to respect those with differing opinions. And it's great to have discussions and sometimes very loud and very passionate discussions. But trying to end it with violence is never acceptable. And despite the fact that he and I probably agreed on very little, I would always defend his and anyone else's right to, to free speech. And so I hope that we can find ways to come together in society to handle the issue of gun violence that is widespread throughout the United States and find ways to remember that we aren't just Democrats and Republicans, but we're all human beings and love each other for that. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. So I attended the SCAG Community Economic and Human Development Committee meeting where we learned about a lot of different housing ownership options. I will say many of them did originate on the East Coast and felt a little off for here. But it's always good to learn and see what different communities are working on. I also attended the Well Untapped Fellowship. We were in Bakersfield at the Cesar Chavez National Monument in Allensworth, which was founded as an African-American town with a deal, a contract to get water that was reneged on and destroyed the town. And also Tulare Lake, which doesn't actually really exist. It's kind of reappeared for a bit, but it's not there. So it was very fascinating to see how water affects all of that. But when I was at the Cesar Chavez National Monument and referring to the violence we've been seeing recently, and I'll just say this, I, I saw something that said, because unfortunately, or, or it being very sober, a lot of people saw what the bullet did to Charlie Kirk's neck. And I heard someone, I saw someone say, imagine what it does to children in a school when there's a school shooting. And I said, absolutely horrific. They're tiny and those are often at closer range. It's horrific. We don't even, can't even imagine. But I was just thinking about how when I grew up in the 80s and 90s and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Cesar Chavez were like, are heroes. They are heroes and their thing was non-violence. And to be honest, I never understood what the big deal was. I'm like, of course, you're not for violence. Who would be for violence? And I think they were so effective and so powerful that by the time kids were going to school in California in the 80s and 90s, that became what we believed. And I am worried that we're veering from that, that people are starting to say, well, okay, violence sometimes. Because that will spiral us down a very dangerous position. So I see how we're going that direction. And now it makes me think that they are even more amazing because Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and all those protesters and Cesar Chavez and all of his union workers experienced horrible things and they still chose non-violence. It's, it's amazing to me. And, and they were right and they prevailed. So I just applaud them as even greater heroes now that I see. I didn't imagine, I didn't, I I, I didn't imagine, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that type of society where violence was the norm, but it was. The things that were done in the South and the things that were done to the farmer, farmworkers, it was, violence was normal. And so I, I think they're even greater heroes, and I seek even more, um, to aspire to those ideals.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, well, my comments, I just wanted, um, thanks, uh, Julie Duarte and Alfonso Larios, and of course, our city manager for having that display for the, our photos finally in the back. That's wo- wonderful, that's great, and it's amazing. I just appreciated all the work that you dedicate to make it happen. Um, also, and the comments from Lupita, you know, um, she's showing us the video, right? And I don't know, I feel like she, she don't understand that we're not supporting those kind of behaviors in our, in our city. And I'm not part of any, any groups promoting or, you know, passing those rumors, because if you that is not my intention to, uh, to do those kind of, um, I'm not in favor of people, um, doing those kind of nasty videos and, and bully the business or bullying our council, you know, and for the public record, you know. I never been on to the right, or to the left, or to the back, or to the front, you know. I always try to be my own mind and support whatever is right, you know. And, uh, I have independent mind. I will never, you know, support something like that. Um. Uh, with El Grito, uh, the Grito was amazing, beautiful. But just a little suggestion, maybe in the future events, I would love to see our flat, our San Fernando flat in our events. Because I don't, I'm not sure if, uh, people really recognize our flat from the city of San Fernando. And maybe the flat from the city of San Fernando can be in the front. And the same with the American flat. Um, that's the only recommendation that I would like to see it. And perhaps, you know, we can recruit a student from our city of San Fernando. Um, s- high school, middle school, you know, the, I would like to see more students from our city to be involved in our community events. And maybe now that we're going to visit some of the schools, or maybe the mayor, maybe we can recruit some of the students and, you know, motivate those students to be part of our, um, government, our local government, through step. And of course, I, you know, my prayers are with the families and the schools shooting. I feel like it's too many, too many, and we get into violence. And, you know, I was reflecting even in myself, how I conduct myself here with my colleagues. You know, sometimes we, uh, we agree, we, we agree and disagree, and we get passionate on this and, and that. But at the end of the day, you know, we all want the best for our city, for our families, and, you know, with respect and our opinions and, you know, always thinking love is, is strong, is stronger than hate. And if you, we can pass that to our future generation, you know, like, we can disagree, but still can work together and, you know. Because at the end of the day, you know, maybe we want the same thing in different ways. The result is that we can unify our city. And, you know, um, that's all. And I just want to thank every single, our staff from the administration to the public boards for all the work that you do. Uh, the secretaries that, um, may seem impatient with us, request most of the time. But, you know, we're here to serve our community and just community, get in touch with the, uh, your government here in the city of San Fernando. I receive a lot of phone calls, emails, and of course, I'm going to agendize, um, some of your concerns for the next meeting. And just be patient with us. We're also human beings. We're not perfect. We make mistakes, but we learn from our mistakes, and we're here to serve you, not in support in any way, you know. And I can say, because I, I, I know my colleagues here, you know, they have big hearts. And, you know, we're here to, to support you. That's all. Thank you.
All right. We had a good meeting. We're almost out, almost nine o'clock. I'm done with my speech. Anyway, I just want to say about El Grito. I thought it was, uh, a great event. Um, I, I enjoyed it. Um, it was our first Discover San Fernando event. I thought it was spectacular. That's what I wanted. And I want to thank Kanika, our interim city manager, and the city staff for making, uh, it successful. Daniel Pechi, our master of cer- ceremonies. Javier Verdín, who also, um, uh, you know, was partially a cer- cer- master of cer- ceremonies with, uh, El Grito. All the, those who entertained us, all those who sponsored the event. The young man from the Mariachi Tesoro that sang the national anthem. He did a wonderful job. It was just amazing. The charros that presented the Mexican flag. The Boy Scouts who presented the American flag with, uh, and did the color guard. Uh, Javier Verdín, Andrew Ben Rodriguez singing the El Ino Nacional, My Valley Pass, for helping us kick off our first event of Discover San Fernando. And, uh, the general counsel from the Mexican consulate, Mr. Orozco, who opened, um, the event with, uh, El Grito. It appeared that everyone enjoyed the event, and, uh, will come back, um, for our future events. When we discuss our twenty-twenty-six budget, I hope that we will be able to consider it as a yearly event in the city in addition to finding a permanent home for the Liberty Bell, which I plan to ag- uh, agendize in our coming meeting. Um, for, also, I'm, another item that I did, another thing I did this week, past week, was I, uh, inside, on September eleventh, I attended the nine-eleven L A Fire Department, uh, twenty-twenty-five remembrance ceremony. Councilmember in Burg I C also attended as well. It's a ceremony that everyone reme- remembers where they were and what they were doing, uh, when it happened. And as the firefighters, uh, were looking at the news, those, you know, they're seeing the firefighters going into the burning buildings, and, uh, and they know, as firefighters, they know that they're not going to make it back out. You know, that's one thing, they said, they're not going to come back. And just, you know, just, just knowing that, it says, and they kind of give you a vision of seeing, you know, when there are those that were in the building coming down, and those going up and seeing their faces, they're giving you visions of what they're going through. And it's just so amazing and so touching, and they have the bagpipes and, uh, they're ringing the bell. You know, just, this is part of this whole ceremony. There's a lot of firefighters, the Sheriff's Department. And they do a, a ceremony with, um, four reefs and two people holding the reefs and taking it in front of the flag and piece of this, you know, the medal from one of the buildings. And it's just an amazing event, and as a council member, you have a privilege of being able to be there and seeing that, and it's just unforgettable. So anyway, just wanted to share that. And, um, also on September twelfth, I attended the VICA event called the VICA Extraordinary Women and Leadership Twenty-Twenty-Five. And there were four, uh, three divisions that were there. They were panels, and, uh, they had three, um, someone from the, uh, three, you know, women from the L A Fire Department, L A P D, and, um, L A Sheriff's Department. And they were at, they were talking about, the topic was the fires that we had earlier this year. And, uh, and they discussed, you know, what, what they were up against and all the challenges they had. And, um, at the end, what they were asked is like, you know, what, what, what do you recommend for everyone? And, and one of them said that they discussed the, uh, the, the first from the, you know, early on that they asked, uh, to be engaged and attend meetings, just be engaged in your community. That was one of the things, and that to attend as many meetings as you can. Be hopeful, and don't, you know, don't lose hope for your children, for children. Create community groups. They know what's best, and they know what the community needs. And they want to be there, they want, you know, the community wants to be there, they want to be present when, if disaster hits, and they want to be ready. They want to be present, and they want to be resilient. And that was the message that they all gave. And they were very, you know, they were great women. They were like, they were all captains, high, high-level positions within their departments. Uh, excellent speakers. And they had women that were also in, uh, business as well. But it was excellent presentation. And then, uh, also attended the financial summit, which was really well-done. Panelists from, uh, they had a panel, they had, um, they went to breakout sessions, very well put together from, um, various entities of, of, uh, our sponsors. But anyway, it was great, but well-done and great. And it was, uh, was it through the icon, our, our gain, gain, gained, did a great job. Food was good, too. From, uh, little patches, little, little batches, little patches. Anyway, thank you, everyone. We had a great meeting, and we're done at nine P M. This meeting is adjourned.